Meeting will come to order. Welcome to the Monday, July 16, 2012, meeting of the Mercer Island City Council. See, before we go into appearances, we have a, no, we have a roll call to do. Thank you.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland. Councilmember Jane Brom.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady. Councilmember Thompson. Deputy Mayor Dan Graus.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you. Okay, before we go into appearances, we have one piece of special business. And from time to time, the council has the opportunity to recognize citizens who have made a positive contribution to the Mercer Island community. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing a member of our community who is this year's recipient of the Flash Family Inspirational Award. The Flash Family Inspirational Award was established in 2009 by the community artist and activist Phil Flash. The award honors a Mercer Island senior adult who exemplifies the spirit of good sportsmanship or community leadership and who possesses an optimistic attitude and friendly demeanor while acting as a role model to others. Phil saw the abundance of community participation by seniors and wanted to recognize those members whose contribution went above and beyond. This year's recipient of the Flash Family Inspirational Award is Pauline Reed McKay, who's here in the audience. Pauline Reed moved to Mercer Island in 1967. Her first community involvement was through the Mercer Island Preschool Association, including early organization of the well-loved Circus McGurkis and construction of the dragon at Dragon Park. She was among the first members of the Mercer Island Country Club, and from the onset of its swim team was a regular volunteer for nearly two decades as her children swam in the program. By 1973, Pauline had become yet another leader of the community by persisting against considerable hazing to become the first female firefighter in not only our community, but in King County as well. She served first as a volunteer, then as a part-time paid firefighter for a decade. Many Mercer Island children remember her as the lady firefighter who taught them CPR. Pauline's volunteer career grew to include the National Ski Patrol by 1976, and she was awarded the National Rank Number 6465 for service at Ski Acres in Alpenthal, where she patrolled for over 30 years. She left only three years ago when ordered by her doctors to stop hauling toboggans. She was often recruited by Mercer Island Boy and Girl Scout troops to assist in winter badge outings and served as a troop leader for several years. Pauline helped organize rowers into forming the Mercer Island Rowing Association, which is part of the Parks Department's master plan that has yet to be activated. Pauline has been physically active and setting an example in our community for how to both enjoy sports and use them for community service for well over 40 years. She now finds herself dealing with ALS, Lou Gehrig's disease. Despite the difficulties this disease poses, she continues to set an example by staying involved in sports with the help of other able-bodied athletes. She rides all over our island on a semi-recumbent bike pedaled by her son-in-law, Grant Skoll, and goes out in outdoors-for-all beach wheelchair on sunny days. When the snow returns this coming winter, she hopes to take to the slopes on a sit ski through a handicap program. So, on behalf of the Flash family, the Department of Youth and Family Services, and the city of Mercer Island, thank you, Pauline, for all you've done to give Mercer Island and several other communities in Washington State, all that you've given them. And now Cindy Goodwin will come up, and she's the Director of the Department of Youth and Family Services, and have a few more words regarding this award.
Thank you, Mayor Bassett. So, the Flash Family Award has been around for four years, and Pauline Reed McKay is the fourth recipient of the award. This is a perpetual plaque, and it will hang in the Mercer Island Community and Events Center. And each year, the awardee is given a gift. And this year, the family has asked for a brass plaque that will be on a bench in the park and hopefully near the dog run in honor of Pauline's work. Thank you, Pauline.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that, and thanks for coming. Now, if you're wise, you will immediately duck out back into this good weather rather than sticking around for all the gulliness that's to come. Yeah, thank you, Dan. Pauline, Carrie, did anybody, would you like to step up and say something?
Sure.
Please do. Sorry, I didn't mention it. Yeah, so don't go away.
Well, first of all, Mercer Island's an amazing place to live and to rear your children, and we thank all of the whole community for that, especially the council. I also just would like to say that ALS is a surprise disease. It's an orphan disease. Not very many people have heard of it or know much about it. And if you ever know anyone who has it, please go to them quickly and give them your hand. Thank you for doing that for me and my family. Yet they're prayed with slum, and it's nice to know that the grandchildren will have a plaque to look at in the future. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
To the Flash.
Thank you all for coming. That's all right? Okay, we move on to appearances. Someone asked the question of whether there will be multiple opportunities to speak tonight. We will have just one. So, we will, if you have comments about any of the items on the agenda or anything in general, please use this opportunity to speak. Rules of engagement, three minutes. The lights will come on to let you know that your time is close to up and then up. I will transgently cut you off at the three-minute mark. Please begin by stating your name and address, and I think that's it. So, would anybody like to begin? Welcome.
Thank you. Dorsecasen 5623, 80th Avenue Southeast, Mercer Island. Mayor Bassett, councilwomen, councilmen. I'm speaking on behalf of Agenda Bill 4752, parking along the Mercer Ways, revisited. And kind of my first question, why is it revisited? A few months back, I was here. Citizens of Mercer Island spoke. When I attended that meeting, I would estimate that it was at least 75 to 80 percent of the citizens speaking were against curtailing the parking along the Mercer Ways. And the second question, why are you giving preference to a hobby club over the taxpayers of Mercer Island? I know it is a hobby. I have a son who is a bicyclist, a racist. He races bicycles. Not that I don't think that it's a healthy hobby, but it is a hobby. The percentage of the Cascade Club who actually commute on a bicycle is minute. It is a business, a business that hires lobbyists, a business that convinces cities and states and the federal government to use taxpayers' monies on their behalf. No license plate tax, no gas tax, no tolling tax, no tax but special benefits. And the third question, House Bill 4752 indicates no cost. Is some company donating the signs, and are volunteers digging the holes for the signs? Some would say it is a state or a federal government grant. It doesn't come from the Mercer Island budget. Where did the money originate to be part of the state or federal government? I would say it was the taxpayers. And the fourth question, did you review the facts that a citizen took his time and expertise to analyze the safety issues? Appears that the analysts did not confirm the notion that this was being done for a safety issue. I urge you to keep the Mercer Ways as is. Don't disrespect the Mercer Island taxpayers, and don't give off-island residents preference over on-island residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Joy Matsura, 7264 West Mercer Way. I'm also commenting about parking along the Mercer Ways. And I want to say parked cars are not such a problem that the council needs to spend so much time and energy on this. You are ruining the quality of life on this island and decreasing the saleability of many homes. The shoulders are not lined with cars every day. Many days, there are no cars parked for miles on the Mercer Ways. On occasion, there might be a few cars parked on the shoulder, and so, oh my God, what can a bicyclist or pedestrian do? They can stop, look both ways, and go around. Same as what they would do if the shoulder is blocked by a trash can or a broken branch or a ditch. Traffic is not so heavy that anyone would have to wait a long time for an opening on traffic to be able to proceed around any obstruction. If you truly are concerned about the safety of bicyclists, pedestrians, and cars, then address safety. Encourage drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists to use caution. As I drive around the island, I see bicyclists swerve into traffic without first checking to see if the way is clear. I see pedestrians walk to a curb and blindly step out without stopping first and looking. More care on everyone's part would do more for overall safety than a parking ban. However, if you believe that parked cars are the root of all evil, then any of you voting for this should ban parking in a half-mile radius of your own homes as well, not just on your street, but on the side streets. Heck, do it on the whole island. You may think that banning street parking on Mercer Ways means cars can just park on the side street, but in many areas, there aren't any. Some that look like they are are really private, shared driveways, and I know the people in them don't appreciate having cars park on their private driveway. I've looked over the plan put forth by Mr. Bassett and Mr. Graus, and I think it's poorly thought out. For example, you want to ban parking at the bus stops. Normally, I would agree, but the 201 bus only comes by three times a day, twice before 8:00 a.m. and once at 6:00 p.m. And it doesn't come at all on the weekends. If there's room for a car to park safely, why not let people park there when the bus isn't due? Because you're taking away all the other places where they could park. And I have to wonder what the purpose of the plan is. Item 5 states that shoulders for parking doesn't cause any problems, should have the parking banned anyway from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on the weekends. This makes sense only if safety is not the reason for banning parking. It makes sense only if safety is just an excuse, and that what really is at stake here is that someone has a personal agenda to ban parking on the Mercer Ways. You have the power to impose this type of thing and mess up the island, but using your power this way is an abuse, and it's wrong. You were elected to govern, not to rule.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Richard Ferry, and my wife Maude and I live at 7414 East Mercer Way. We recently emailed our thoughts and concerns about the parking restrictions on the Mercers, and we thank the members of the council who have read and acknowledged that communication. Thank you very much. Tonight, I wanted to just take a few minutes to express my appreciation to Joe Baer, and I don't know if Joe Baer is here tonight, I've never met him, for his detailed study of biking on Mercer Island and biking accidents on Mercer Island since 2001. It provides a well-documented guide to help improve the safety for the cyclists on the island and does not, I underscore, does not lend any support for the broad and sometimes confusing parking restrictions on the Mercers for the cyclist's protection. We hope Joe's report has been shared with the staff and that is providing input and recommendations for the proposed parking restrictions on the Mercers. As a community, we need to work together to find a balanced approach for the Mercers, one that enhances safety without adversely affecting the rights of the property owners. If I could orchestrate the discussion that's going to take place about paved shoulders and parking restrictions, I'd put the whole matter in abeyance, except for studying the five intersections highlighted in Joe's report until the council organizes and convenes a citizens committee. It would be great to have additional input from the residents who will be impacted by your decisions, and I would recommend expanding the committee to include at least two representatives each from north, east, south, and west Mercer, along with the pedestrians and the cyclists. To date, there is no hard evidence to support parking restrictions on the Mercers to enhance safety for cyclists, but I understand some would like to change the complexion of the Mercers to make the roadway friendlier to our resident pedestrians and may use the cyclists to justify the changes. As you know from earlier testimony, cyclists do not want to ride on the paved shoulders. And as we noted in our email to the council, nearly half of the cyclists ride counterclockwise around the island, and there are no paved shoulders on the counterclockwise lane. So, the $64 question is, what do the residents of Mercer Island want and need, and how do we involve them in the process? The citizens committee is a great start, but I think we could do more. To help, Maude and I would be willing to fund a survey of the residents along the Mercers to better understand their needs and concerns before the council takes any action. I believe we only have two members of the council who live on or in close proximity to the Mercers, and both have expressed opposition to the parking ordinance. As our elected representatives, do you think it would be helpful to have an input from a broad cross-section of residents before implementing any future parking restrictions that would affect the use and enjoyment of our property? We think the survey findings would also help the citizens committee and staff in making recommendations of the council. This is not an original idea. It is simply taking Joe's idea and expanding it to a new audience. If you believe this has any merit, Maude and I would be pleased to help. Thank you for the opportunity to share these thoughts with you, and we do appreciate all that you're doing and all the staff is doing for Mercer Island in spite of some of the concerns and comments that we've expressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tim Steege, and I'm on 4600 Forest Avenue. And I'm a runner and a cyclist, member of the Cascade Bicycle Club, participant in SDP and many other long-distance bike rides and running activities, so I spend a lot of time on the Mercers. I run around or bike around Mercer Island several times a week and have been doing so for 11 years. And I have not ever seen a problem for myself or anybody else that's been running or biking along. I'm a neurosurgeon at Swedish, and I haven't seen any accidents related to the biking done on Mercer Island. So, I don't see any reason for this parking business. I think it should be left the way it is. I don't park on West Mercer, which is the closest Mercer to our street, except in a snowstorm, and that's covered, I understand. So, I don't have anything personally to gain by being opposed to the parking. I think it's just wrong for the residents of Mercer Island, especially those who live along those streets. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Russ Harris. I'm at 6240 West Mercer Way. So, Mayor Bassett, I appreciate your email just a few days ago stating that this was going to come back up again, and like the first speaker, I'm a little surprised that we're continuing to revisit this. I think the question was asked at the last council meeting where this thing was pushed off, you know, what problem is it we're trying to solve? So, you've heard from a lot of residents quite a bit, and I'm surprised that this just keeps coming back up. I didn't get involved in the road diet. I know there's a lot of people here that are consternated over the fact that that's finally happening, and I would just ask that, you know, as a citizen, as a voter, as a taxpayer on Mercer Island, I bought my house knowing that I could park along West Mercer Way because parking was constricted, so changing the rules in the middle of the game does not sit well with me, and I would appreciate your serious consideration to spending any time, money, or taxpayer dollar effort on this whole fiasco. Thank you.
Thank you. Gravity's a wonderful thing. Welcome.
I'm Esther Steege. I live at 4600 Forest Avenue, and I'm changing the subject a little bit because my husband already talked about bikes, so I wanted to comment on the budget. We believe that you should develop a budget. I've listened to some of the budget talk in the previous meetings, and we believe that you should develop a budget that is within our current means without raising taxes on the citizens of this city for at least several years, that most of us have learned how to live within our means, and that we believe the city should also learn to live within its means, and that our economy is not thriving at this time, and that we should not be putting extra pressure on the citizens to have to pay more taxes in the coming years until things get better overall. This is not a time to increase payroll, to increase it by even two. It should be a zero net. We should not be increasing payroll at this time. We consider the people of Mercer Island as, or I think you should consider the people of Mercer Island as part of your extended family, and as part of your family, you know, you are careful with your budgets for your family, and so you should be careful with the budget for the bigger family of Mercer Island. I appreciate your consideration. Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment. Thank you. And we move on now to minutes. So, we have two sets of minutes, the mini-planning session minutes of June 16 and the regular meeting minutes of June 18. Anybody care to make a motion?
Have a comment.
Let's have a motion first and then a comment.
I move to accept the minutes of the mini-planning session on June 16, 2012.
A second.
A second, okay. Debbie.
Just a couple of quick comments, and I think either Ally or the broader group can determine whether they need to be included. The first one is under Sustainability Policy Task Force Recommendations. The second point, under Agreements and Direction, states, "attempt to fund a sustainability staff position in the 2013-2014 biennial budget." I'd like to have that somehow amended to include, or with the understanding that that position was to be combined with the potential Assistant Communications Director. It was not intended to be a distinct standalone headcount. The second piece that I would bring up is under the plastic bag ban. Again, when I look at the comments, the council discussed the issue and concluded it would again defer a decision till the January 2013 planning session. Somewhere in that context, I'd like to see it noted that it was determined that the plastic bag ban should be discussed as part of a more comprehensive sustainability initiative, that it would not be in and of itself, but that it would need to be documented in a broader and more far-reaching set of objectives. So, those would be the two amendments I would request.
So, we always quickly come to the question of opinion versus facts of the matter, and did you check the review, I guess, of the mini-planning session? So, we don't actually have any recording of this?
No. You'd have to go from memory, and I certainly do remember the conversation about combining sustainability and the communications coordinator position, so I think that, yeah, I think that does ring a bell. The other comment, I'm sure it was said, I don't specifically remember it, but...
I paid attention to that particularly because I was on part of that Sustainability Task Force, so I do think that Debbie's recollection is correct, that it wasn't by itself but within the context of larger discussion of the sustainability efforts.
Okay. So, as you'll remember, we didn't have a minute taker and recording. We had Noel doing his best to take notes and as best he could to get the agreements and direction down, and I think we did a pretty good job with those corrections. What I suggest is, we take this one back, right, Ally, and we'll do a redraft, bring it back in two weeks for formal adoption.
Okay. Anything else before we do that? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask a question just for clarification. Since I wasn't there, I'll throw this out as a question, then defer to the other council members. But on the discussion of the 2013-2014 operating budget kickoff, that last bullet there, council directed staff to a 50-50 strategy to balance the budget, colon, 50% expenditure cuts and 50% new revenue. Is it relevant on that 50% expenditure on whether that was budget-to-budget comparison, actual-to-budget comparison, or actual-to-actual? When we talk cuts?
Yeah, I think that's right.
The conversation did not happen?
Yeah. So, I think what's there reflects actually accurately what was discussed. Okay, if nothing else, then we set that aside for review at our next meeting with Ally adding corrections. So, that brings us to the June 18 regular minutes. Can I have a motion for that?
I move to accept the minutes of the June 18 city council meeting. Second.
Okay. Corrections, questions on that? Okay, all in favor of accepting the June 18 minutes signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Abstaining. Oh, thank you. We move on to the consent calendar. I have a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I move to accept the consent calendar. Second.
Okay. Anybody desire to pull anything off?
I have, I'd like to talk about the accounts payable, so if you'd like to take those off.
Okay, so payroll and Agenda Bill 4751 remain on.
I'm sorry, and 4751, I'd like to take that off also.
Sure you don't want to pull payroll too?
I know. I have some issues with that.
All right, so we are left with payroll. All in favor of accepting payroll, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, so payables. Mike?
Okay, so on Set 3, Page 8, there's a 9,500 shoreline appeal. Is that something we have to talk executive session, or can you just kind of snapshot it?
Well, I'm sure it's not an executive session item, but I couldn't tell you. It's probably a resident appealing a decision having to do with a shoreline application, but I...
Shoreline management, touch stuff?
Probably, but we'd just have to go, oh, Scott, Scott knows.
Sure. Actually, the board's decision came back in the city's favor. It was one neighbor appealing the grant of a dock extension to another neighbor.
And then the cost, this is a bill that's been paid, so...
Correct. It released the legal service for the appeal.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And there at the bottom, EMS Cost of Service Study, $2,775. Is that a study that we've already done?
I think I know the answer, Chip. Let me try and see if I get it right. The state of Washington requires us to periodically do a study of cost allocation for that component of our emergency medical service bill that is allocated out as a utility, and we have to do this every year. Is that correct? Every two years. Okay. And so, that's what that is.
Okay, so that's a study with reference to allocation of funds and not a study on we need more money?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is just a process step that they require us to go through.
Okay, and on, let's see, the very last page, which is, I don't see a page number on that. Is it 13? Okay. On the environmental consult for the city hall, low impact, so this is $21,865 additional dollars from the $10,000...
So, you guys steer me toward your...
Okay, I'm sorry. It's...
Oh, okay.
It's Low Impact Development.
Yeah, that is our Low Impact Development project.
So, this is just consult?
No, it's more than that. I'll get back to you tomorrow with exactly what work was accomplished in that.
And then another concern I have a little bit is, there seems to be a proliferate, and this is mox, nix, but in the big scheme of things, but I happen to get into details too much sometimes, maybe, maybe. details too much sometimes, maybe, maybe. There seems to be a lot of T-shirts out there. On this one in particular, I've got almost $8,000 in T-shirts, you know, track shirts, summer shirts, T-shirts, staff. You know, $58 here, $58 there, 1,200 here, adds up to 8,000 for just this one. I know my son was at a summer camp and also at, and also at the beach club. You know, if they want a T-shirt, they end up buying them, they have to buy them, so...
Is that a question or a comment?
What's that?
That's a question?
Well, that's a concern. That's just a concern going forward, Rich, that we seem to be in the automatic T-shirt mode for activity or event as a SOP, and we might, it shouldn't be an automatic thing. Might be something to reevaluate. And, thank you, Ms. Mayor, that's all I have for...
All right, well, I'm just upset now that I didn't get a T-shirt.
Darth Vader T-shirt after the break.
All right, I'm looking, oh, on payables?
Since we got into it.
Okay.
On Set 1, Page 11, I see that there is a credit for Roundup, and if you could just talk about that, because I thought we didn't use Roundup in our community.
And the fact is, we don't anymore. This was apparently a package of Roundup that's in their warehouse that had been sitting there, and since we don't use it, they found somebody to take it, so it was a credit back. I think it may have been from the manufacturer of the store. So it was a credit back to us, and we don't use it. We use another product that is much more environmentally sensitive.
Okay, thank you.
You might want to check on that.
I did. That's almost verbatim from Jason.
I mean, I don't, judging from the, when I was on Open Space Conservancy Trust, we were using a product which was then described as basically a Roundup product for the deal within basis.
And I think that may have changed fairly recently, so...
Tom, others?
Well, I was just going to say, back on the T-shirt thing, which I don't think is as...
You won't want to.
I won't want to, but I think also, just because it's an expense, doesn't mean that it's not bought by the community. So if my child goes to camp and I pay for camp and my child gets a T-shirt, doesn't mean that it's purely out of the city. This is just the city paying for it, doesn't mean it doesn't get reimbursed. So just thinking on that, too.
Okay. I don't think, do I need a motion at this point on payables?
Yes.
I do, okay. I'm looking for a motion on payables.
I move to accept the payables.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Very good, we're on to Agenda Bill 4751. Mike?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have a question on the bike route from Island Crest Way. So is it a continuous, as it's designed, is it a continuous bike route that we're anticipating going from Island Crest Way to 88th and Southeast 45th? As we creep onto a north-south recreational lane?
90th and Southeast 47th and 88th Avenue will all be marked with sharrows in each direction to identify those as a shared roadway for cars and bikes.
Mike, you asked about Island Crest Way, though.
Well, going from Island Crest Way, no, starting at, going from Island Crest Way, or, yeah, starting at Island Crest Way...
Going up 90th? So you're not on Island Crest Way in which you're describing, you're off.
You're talking about the area that's being improved here.
The area that's being improved on this work plan, starting at Island Crest Way...
Well, what your Agenda Bill says, it says new five-foot wide paved shoulders will be constructed. That's what I think Mike is referring to.
Yes, on a portion of it.
And it looks like I'm...
The paved shoulders will be for pedestrian use, and those are only on 47th on the north side and a portion of 90th towards the south end of it.
And will there be any kind of signage to direct bicyclists on this corridor?
Yes.
So that they're not on Island Crest?
Yes, we're planning some bicycle signage. I haven't identified exactly where they go yet, but yes, bike route signage is planned to be installed by city forces.
Well, Councilman O'Graw's had it right, so this five-foot shoulder that we're adding, so is that going to be a shoulder that's continuous from Southeast 53rd and Island Crest Way, i.e. where we begin on this residential repaving project? And as I, and I'm just, I wasn't real clear, is it a continuous path then?
That shoulder is going to go from Island Crest up to...
To the Yeshiva.
Across from Yeshiva High School. Then it will stop, and then on 47th, there will be a paved shoulder on the north side.
So it's not continuing, where's Yeshiva, right there at 48th or so?
It's at 51st. It's a big sign, it says New Northwest Yeshiva.
Oh, there it is. So it goes from 53rd to Yeshiva, it stops?
Correct.
And then it picks back up where?
47th.
Southeast 47th on the north side, and it will, that paved shoulder will tie into a short section of sidewalk that the Island Crest Way project will be building from Island Crest up to 88th Avenue.
Why are we doing this? I guess I didn't interpret it, I didn't understand it until Mike just pointed it out. I sort of assumed it was continuous, but so why are we doing these little segments, particularly the one on 90th?
The south end of 90th does not have as long of a line of sight as from Yeshiva High School north. We also needed a way to connect into the existing sidewalk south of, well, basically behind that mailbox pullout at 90th and Island Crest. So this paved shoulder is a transitional area from a sidewalk to just a roadway with no pedestrian facility specifically.
And very low traffic volumes at that?
Correct. 90th has very low traffic at that point. You also have, from 48th to the north, you have, as well as 90th is a north-south route, pedestrians and bikes can use 89th, 90th, or 91st. So you have three routes up to 47th, and then you also have three routes north of 47th, and you have 90th, 89th, and 88th.
Yeah, but what we're trying to do is get a residential north-south, what do we call it, a recreational north-south?
Bike path. The original plan was to run a bike, I mean, at one point, the theory was we were going to try to make a north-south bike connection, which was going to parallel Island Crest, and this was going to be part of that program.
And it is.
And it is, correct.
Well, it is, but just as a shero.
That's correct, and that's what you approved in the bicycle pedestrian plan.
On a street that has very low traffic volume, and therefore it doesn't make sense to try and segregate the users.
This is consistent with what was adopted in the plan.
And the part of it, as I went out and walked us with Ann and Clint, and they talked to me about their ideas, and I was supportive of that, the issue is at the south end of 90th, if you're southbound on your bicycle, you don't want people southbound crossing at the last minute to get onto that bike path behind the mailboxes, because then you've got folks conflicting with cars who are doing turns off of Island Crest Way and have been moving with some speed. So it makes sense to try and get people funneled to that east side of the roadway as they're starting down that hill. But for the rest of it, Clint, do you remember what the traffic volume on that road is? We walked it, we saw other people walking it, people comfortably walk in the roadway on that.
I don't recall those exact numbers. I think they were on the order of 800 cars per day, and that's the total of both directions.
Well, you get a lot of traffic when Yeshiva's starting in the morning and it's ending at the end of the day, as much as my guess is when you get all the traffic on that road.
Yes, I'm sure there's a morning and afternoon surge.
I'd say probably in that 800, there's a waiting then toward that south portion of the street as well.
And the other element that we're looking at is if you put the shoulder in, you put the shoulder in, you immediately beg the question, which we're going to deal with a little later, of parking on shoulder, and you also up the cost of the project and reduce the amount you can do. So, you know, to put shoulder there and have it, it becomes sort of a feel-good thing, but not a practical use of the money.
Is there a record of any accidents on that road?
I did not specifically check that, so I don't know. I would guess that it would be only a few, if there are any.
Okay.
So as Rich points out here, we are post, two discussions about this in a bid award tonight. We can talk about it, but we're well past the time when it probably is useful for us to do that.
Yeah, you're right. I should have picked that up beforehand, so error on me. Ms. Mayor, I have another question which does pertain, which is, I think, more appropriate to talk about here. You know, I was going through your, the budget here, why are we doing a 9% contingency plan?
When I was putting, when I was putting these numbers together, using a standard 10% contingency, I was coming in a little bit over. So rather than come to you and ask for a little bit more money, I thought, looking at my history of residential street projects where we've used some contingency, it, in the last five years, has not exceeded 9%, and that was an easy way to get this project within the budget that I had. Trying to keep with our theme that we're going to live within our means and not ask you for more, I feel pretty comfortable reducing that down slightly to keep me under my budget ceiling.
And I commend you on that. That's, and that's good, and that's, God, I have some notes here left at home, so I'm going to have to do this from memory. So, and I commend you on that, and that's really good. But then why then, from as a percentage perspective, and why then as a percentage perspective, did contract administration and project management go up almost, I think it was 30% compared to our 2011 residential street overlays? I mean, so if you compare this to last year's residential street overlay, your construction contingency went down a percent, which I would say is fantastic staff work right there if that's, that you want to run a leaner project, but it seems like you took from one bucket and put it into another bucket, i.e. contract administration and project management, which as a percentage of this project is, I think it's 30% higher than the contract administration project management from 2011.
Last year's project, I did more of the project in-house, using in-house resources. This year, with the Island Crest Way project workload, I didn't have that option, so what you're seeing here is some outsourcing costs, which is why it's higher.
Okay, the last question I have, thank you. The last question I have is, and I'll get back to this, the engineer estimate thing. Mr. City Manager, I think would be interesting as a cost-saving estimate or a cost-saving experiment, to just do away with that engineer estimate. How much does that engineer estimate cost on this?
Well, it's Clint doing the estimate, and he's doing that to determine as best he can what it looks like before we go into bid, to see if the scope of the project matches with the budget.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought we contracted that out.
No, we do that.
The engineer's estimate is a little of both. I do one, our consultants do one, and we're kind of updating those as the design progresses because we need to know if we can still afford to do what we're designing. It's not an overly expensive task, and as I say, we're updating it throughout our design phase, but that is, the engineer's estimate serves as the benchmark to compare your bids to.
Well, see, I don't understand that. I really don't understand that, and it sounds, you know, I shouldn't, I shouldn't let you off on that because Clint's time, staff's time, that's money. And if we can go through a process without staff doing extra work, then so be it. From a council perspective, I don't see what the engineer estimate does.
I can tell you what it does.
Tell me, please.
It calibrates the project in advance of the bid and improves our odds of staying within budget. If we don't have that, and we just sort of hope it's, we've designed and scoped out a project within budget, but we don't do the estimate, we would then go out to bid, we advertise, get a competitive bid, and it comes in, and if the bid is over, then we're stuck. Then we have to redesign the project, lose whatever time that that takes, and rebid it. And what you've noticed, because we have engineer's estimates, and we've had them for years, and I think every project manager at the city would say, please, let me have a good estimate going in, is that we actually can come to you on time, on schedule, with a bid process, and we almost always stay within budget. And I would be, I'd be very nervous not doing it that way because I think we'd come in and we would get bids over budget.
The bid's the only thing that matters. The bid's the only thing that matters. The bid is what it is.
No, but actually, the design is what really matters, and you have to design a project to within a scope that is likely to get a bid you can afford.
Ally, you're right. Dan points out that we're kind of well beyond the Agenda Bill and into a policy discussion here, which we can have at a future date if there's council support for it. I think for right now, we...
It's not even policy. This is just flat administration. This is public project administration.
We could move to some bad policy around administration if we wanted, so...
I suppose.
Sorry, Mike, I had to throw that in there. Clint, thank you. Mike, I'm, I'm, done?
Okay, yes, Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we award schedules A and B of the 2012 residential street overlays project to Lakeside Industries in the amount of $334,738.50, set the total project budget to $404,914, and direct the city manager to execute the construction contract.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, into regular business. The Open Space Conservancy Trust issue, I'm sorry, I should have announced this beginning of the meeting, has been postponed to a future meeting, and so if someone was here for that, you have my apologies. Yeah, if 10 people walk out at this point, I owe y'all an apology, sorry. Okay, so, and I believe that was because Elliot was not available, somebody was not available.
Elliot was not available.
So we will have that on a future agenda. That moves us to Agenda Bill 4748, Fire Station Fire Apparatus and Fire Equipment Ballot Measure Ordinance, first reading. I see Chip.
Good evening. For the record, your Finance Director, Chip Quarter, I've brought with me our bond counsel, Stacy Crossell Lewis from Pacifica Law Group, and Justin Monway, our financial advisor from Seattle Northwest Securities. I can take a couple of minutes to tee this up, or I can just shut up and take questions from the council. I'm seeing a nod.
Given the conversation I saw at the beginning of the meeting, you need to tee this up, I think.
So, I'll be, I'm not worried about everything, I'll just be very, very brief and tee this up. So, the step we're at currently is a follow-up from your mini-planning session back in June, where we teed up the need for a replacement for South Fire Station, Station 92. We provided our best estimate, the architects were there, and shared that with the council. The council made some decisions, reflected in Page 2 of the Agenda Bill, some add-ons, just one specific add-on. And for relocation of the overhead power lines, we also were explicitly adding temporary housing, because you've got to put the firefighters somewhere, the trucks somewhere while the station is being redone. That wasn't included in the estimate before. Some costs for bond issuance costs, $75,000, and then pre-design costs were added, all to that total debt number, which created a total amount of 4.8 million. And that was the basis for then determining what would be the levy lid lift amount. Again, the council directed the staff to go, I give you two options, the nine-year levy lid lift option or the 20-year bond levy option. Council directed me to go with the nine-year levy lid lift, so that's what's reflected here in this Agenda Bill. I might also, I need to also mention, of course, that the two add-ons that we discussed in the mini-planning session were the fire apparatus replacement sinking fund, needed to square that away financially, and so that needed about $99,000 a year. to square that away financially, and so that needed about $99,000 a year, and then SCBA equipment to $253,000 a year. And so, all that's reflected here. I provided a table for the Council to show you what is the impact on two typical kinds of residents. I showed you the median assessed value home on Mercer Island is $700,000 according to King County this year. And the median is the middle value of all your homes, okay? And then the average or the mean value is $5,000 shy of a million dollars. And so, I show those respective annual impacts on those two homeowners on Page 3 of your Agenda Bill.
Chris, I appreciated that, but why did you do that? Usually you only have the average there.
Yeah, because when I got, I just recently got the median from the King County Assessor, and I was really surprised to see it quite that, you're using such a huge differential between the median and the mean, and there was, and it's been driven by the waterfront properties, according to the individual I talked to. And so, I thought I just would throw that out there as another bit of information, another benchmark to look, to compare it to.
So, do you think the median is more representative than the average going forward?
I think they're both useful. Probably the median is the more useful. So, with that, happy to take Council questions.
Questions before we start into discussion.
Okay, so these are questions on the finance part of it.
The whole thing.
Well, yeah, it's all on the table at this point.
And as a reminder, the goal tonight is to give staff and our Bond Counsel any additional direction with regard to the levy ordinance with the expectation that you will approve a levy ordinance in two weeks. You don't have any additional Council meetings beyond that to do it.
Just further to Mike's question, there's still going to have to be a final discussion, assuming this gets, I mean, if the voters, if we put it in front of the voters and the voters approve it, the issue of what is put out for bid in terms of the fire station itself will still come back to the Council.
There's still a final design to complete.
Right.
The, the fees to pay for that design are included in the package, but the final product has to be designed, be brought back to the Council, yes.
But we just, but so, what we have, since you weren't at the planning session, Mike, but what we have are the preliminary design drawings done by Miller Hall, which give a very good description of generally what the facility would look like, as you know, the floor plans, and some, some idea of what the size would be, but that still has to be, they're still working through the numbers on that. So, but I think, just so we're all clear, that's, we're not sitting here tonight saying that that's exactly that number of square feet, exactly that room, but it gives us eighty, ninety percent of the way there in terms of what it's gonna look like. But we're still not approving that tonight. What we're dealing with exclusively is the financing side of it.
You've designed enough so that you can, in effect, set a project financing.
Right.
And a final project budget will be ultimately fixed after the design, and it'll have to be consistent with the financing decision you do.
Right, we can't make, we can't spend more money.
Right.
But I think also the other reason we're doing it this way is because to get to the next stage of design would require that we expend another $200,000. And without knowing whether the voters would be prepared to approve the project, I think we all agree that we'd be irresponsible to go out and expend that kind of money, just on the assumption that something's gonna happen, which may or may not happen.
This, the steps that we've gone through is very typical of how a public project is put together and then presented to the voters.
Okay, so questions for Chip before we bring it back for discussion? Okay? For the moment?
Yeah, I have some questions then. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Do you have other folks that-
Yep, that was kind of you. Go ahead.
All right, Chip, so we're starting with a 4.4 million estimated project cost. Is that where we're at?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we're adding 67K for the power lines?
Mm-hmm.
150K for temp housing, 75 for bond cost, 100K for pre-design. We're not doing the 150K for fiber optics?
That's correct.
We are not, okay? What about the generator? It was really confusing on the, on there. Why would we not include a generator when it says in here that the generator there out of the gate is inadequate for this new facility?
Invite the Fire Chief to address that one.
For the record, Chris Tubbs, Fire Chief. Miller Hall included that because they didn't at the time when they were conducting the assessment have a good analysis of the capability of that generator at Station 92. Our staff has since done that analysis and feels comfortable with the generator that is currently at that facility that will last us for the new facility as well.
Great. The quip pro quo or other agreement for rear access, will that cost us any money? Either through the Mercer Shopping Village or through Metro?
My conversation with the ownership representatives is no.
Okay. Things like the Zamboni, what's, is that, where's that gonna come from?
Ice ring.
Ice ring? I didn't know this was a fire station plus ice ring.
The Zamboni is a term of endearment that our firefighters give to the floor cleaner.
Do we have one now?
Correct.
We don't do the mop?
The mop doesn't work on the current floor.
So, this is an existing, this is an existing piece of equipment?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you're talking about 891, is that what the trucks come to, the fire trucks, 891,000?
Oh, you're talking about, you take 99,000 times nine years.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then that means the SCBA breathing apparatus will be 477,000? Okay.
No, it's fifty-three times nine.
Fifty-three times nine, okay. And that's, that's include, that's not included in the 4.4?
No, these are add-ons on top of the fire station.
And then, and then you're, let's see, are you adding on the 265,000 from the sewer Lakeline savings?
No, the direction received from the Council at the mini-planning session was the pre-design costs which have incurred to date, okay, 100K in round numbers, that would be added to the bond issue, the 265 would then be available for something else.
Okay, so we're not, we're not subtracting that money that was identified for the firehouse? We're not-
We could have. The direction I received from the Council is, as I understood it, in talking to Rich, is no, that becomes available for other needs.
Okay, what about, you know, just from our experience of new buildings, we see over a 10-year or five-year period, we have some $50,000, ah, darn it, this didn't work, or that, although it's a new building, new buildings inherently have some issues with them that either were unforeseen or the warranty didn't come through. Is it prudent to identify that inevitability in the financing here?
Oh, what?
Do you know, what?
You're talking about operations begin.
I'm talking after operations begin, after you've cleared out your contingency, from past experience-
You close out the project.
Yeah, the project's closed out. From past experience of-
Yeah, I know what you mean. Our experience, I guess the one that comes to mind most is the community center, so it was the last new building we did, was, we didn't have much of that, and that, which we did have, was under warranty for the first couple of years. The roof did require some attention.
Well, the drainage in the parking lot?
And some of that, some of that was under warranty, some of it we had to do ourselves. So, we, yes, we've had some, not a lot, but we've had some, and we have financed that through our, just the CIP, when we needed to come up with our own dollars. But I don't recall us ever contemplating adding dollars to an initial bond issue or financing to take care of the first couple of years of operations.
Well, it's not the first couple of years.
It's preparing maintenance.
We've had major, we've had major issues with the CCMB, with the community center, I mean, four projects in particular that I can think of, that very little warranty was covered on it. I mean, we've had the drainage in the parking lot.
We had the steps on the south side of the building that had to be-
The steps, the patio, and I think there was something else.
And as I said-
I mean, that's what just happens with any new building. It's not, I'm not being critical on anybody, it just happens on any new building.
Well, I know. But we, we just financed that through our normal CIP processes. I remember when we finished the community center, we literally gave back 100,000 or more.
More, yeah.
The project came in under budget. So, one thing that you could do to the extent that the project comes under budget is you keep it in the capital fund for those first couple of years for that kind of thing. Well, we could have done that, we didn't. We gave it back and reduced the property tax to the taxpayers, literally gave it back to the taxpayers, but we could have hung on to it, which you're sort of nodding your head like, maybe we should.
Okay, so what does that bring the total to?
4.803 million. Now, I'm sorry, that's just the cost of the fire station.
I mean, all those things I just said.
That would be debt financed. The other, the SCBA equipment, the fire apparatus, those are annual sinking fund contributions. They're not financed with debt. So, it depends, if you're asking what's the annual levy impact, that's, that's a different, different question.
I'm not sure what question I want to ask. It seems to me that we're putting in 99,000, or we're financing 99,000 a year for nine years for the fire trucks.
Right.
That's 891,000.
Yeah.
So, wouldn't I add that to the 4.4 million and all the other additions?
No, because again, you have to make distinction in what we're financing with debt and what we're not. And the way I think about it is, if the annual average debt service on the fire station, the 4.8 million, is the 608,000, that's the annual levy amount each year for nine years. And then you add to that the annual levy amounts for fire apparatus and for SCBA equipment to your total annual levy amount. And you can take that and multiply it, I suppose, by nine years.
One's an upfront cost and one is a periodic cost.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, but you're bringing those periodic costs back.
Not the, no, not on the fire trucks and the SCBA, that's just gonna be periodic. Well, and the fire truck is just going into the sinking fund, and the SCBA, there is a cost that comes out in some year-
2018.
2018, that's gonna be a lump sum cost, you're gonna have to incur then, so you'll have some money in the bank to pay that, but you may have to finance one or two years of that at that point, but minimal amount. So, basically, if the fire trucks is a periodic cost, the SCBA is mostly a periodic cost with a little bit of balloon at the end, and the-
It's a 50, so for the fire trucks, it's a 99,000 annual periodic cost.
Right, and then the-
And where is that money coming from? The 99,000 per year?
That's the levy, that's part of the levy, so that would be, the taxpayers would pay the $95,000 per year, that money would go into the sinking fund.
Okay, so let me rephrase it that, then. The levy plus the bond?
Well, no, the levy, there is only a levy, but most of the levy, the 600-some-odd-thousand, goes to repay the principal and interest on the loan we're going to have to take out to pay for the fire station, because that money has to be paid upfront. So, that is, that's like a nine-year bond. Everything, but that's the only one that's like a nine-year bond. The rest are just periodic payments into a sinking fund.
But isn't it relevant to bring those periodic payments to the present and-
Well, you can present value them if you want to, but there's no need to, because the vote, the taxpayers are gonna pay for them every year for nine years. So, from the taxpayer perspective, it's, that's the payments, and that doesn't change over the nine-year period.
Yeah, but it's a relevant question to know how much at the end of the nine years this levy is.
Well, you can, I mean, you can do the math if you want to, you can do the math on any part of it, but that's, but, I mean, do what you want. But you asked what the, how the money's being spent, I think, and what's periodic, what's lump sum, and that's what I'm trying to answer you.
So, if I bring all the, if I bring the periodic payments of the breathing apparatus and the fire trucks and all the other add-ons, you know, the 4.4 plus the list that I went through, what's the total value of the levy?
Present value?
He's trying to, he's trying to get to, at the end of nine years, what's the cash out the door?
No, he's not. He's trying to get the present value, and it depends what discount rate you're gonna use.
Well, if you're trying to, if you're trying to back it up to 2012, then that's a present value calculation, and you'd have to have a discount rate and-
Yeah, I don't have that handy.
Okay, so you said it was less the fire trucks, we're not including the fire trucks and the SCOob, the SCBA equipment in the 4.8, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay, so it's from my, just, just using numbers without going into present value and stuff, it's, and to answer my question, it would be 4.8 plus roughly .9 for the fire trucks, plus roughly .5 for the SCBA equipment, which is 14, is that 6.2? 6.2 million. I think that's kind of a relevant number, but, all right. I'll give somebody else, are there any other questions out there?
Anybody? Okay. You got a lot to go, Mike, or a couple to go? Give us a preview here.
No, maybe I'll just say it per statement since I know kind of what the question answers are.
Okay. All right, it comes back to Council then for discussion. Chip, thank you, and don't go far.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I had one question for Chris. Can you describe for the Council what a rescue truck does?
Rescue truck is a vehicle that carries specialized equipment that we don't carry or can't carry on our other vehicles, like the fire engines and the aid cars. We use that vehicle for very specific types of incidents. In our industry, we call them technical rescue. They're things like motor vehicle accidents, what we call a trench rescue or a confined space rescue. So, the rescue truck is used to provide that equipment, bring it to the scene so that we can mitigate those types of incidents.
Well, I guess, yeah, that's fine, I understand.
So, Mr. President, we don't want to ask questions about the structure itself at this time?
Well, I, I, yeah, I think that to some extent, Mike, you're a little bit in a tough spot because you missed the last-
I apologize for that.
Yeah, last meeting. So, the discussion was had, and while, you know, there wasn't 100% support for any one thing, there was Council support for the design that we have at this point sufficient to go forward. And I think, Rich, tell me if I'm wrong, but there will be an opportunity at a later time to talk more about specific details of the design before it actually gets built.
Absolutely. But where we're at right now, the Council has given us direction to go forward with the pre-design that was laid out for you by Miller Hall. That's an important statement. The station, unless you guys say so, the station's not gonna get redesigned. What you're going to get is more detail within the design as you go into subsequent stages into final design and construction documents. You will approve a package of final design drawings and construction documents prior to going to bid. But there, you've passed, at your mini-planning session, a very important threshold. You basically have laid out the basics of this building, and now it's about filling in detail.
And so, I mean, so Mike, of course, you and I have had discussions such that I know you have an interest in a reduced-size facility from this. Perhaps it's fair, and perhaps I'm just opening a can of worms here, to say that if the place you wanted to go is to make a motion that we allocate less dollars to this, without talking about why there's less dollars to this building, and I see Jane's kind of going high-eyed on me here, but, but that, I mean, that would be a fair, it seems to me, thing for you to offer up if the, you know, the Council would, would then respond to that. I think that's a different question than debating the specifics of the design, which we, which we have done, and trying to reopen that tonight. I don't, I mean, if others vehemently disagree with me, the way Jane's eye-popping seemed to, I'll immediately back away from that.
No, it's just, because we have to vote on an amount. So, if, if Mike wanted to support a smaller amount, then that's perfectly appropriate thing to put forward. It doesn't have to translate into the size of the building. I mean, the way I think it would take the form of is Mike or somebody else in the Council saying, you know, we just don't want to spend this much money, and tell staff to go design something to a, to a smaller, smaller budget. And that's, that's appropriate to do, and then staff- And that's, that's appropriate to do, and then staff will have to deal with that.
Okay, so, uh, Jane?
Well, it seems to me we're, um, kind of talking around a major issue here. Um, we've got a fire station that needs to be replaced, and we've got two other issues that, um, are added to that. Uh, one approach we could do tonight is, um, combine the fire station with the breathing apparatus, and that's it. Or look at the fact that we need, need to purchase a new rescue truck in two thousand and thirteen and have it by two thousand and fourteen. That's less than two years away. It seems prudent to put that truck in with this mix. But I, I do not want to go to redesigning the fire station and picking a number and saying, build a three million dollar fire station and that's it. I think it's backwards to do it that way. Uh, if we're talking about decreasing the, um, levy at this point, we should split these issues apart then. Talk about the fire station as designed, realizing it is still preliminary, um, and then talk about the other two measures.
I kind of agree with, uh, Councilmember Braun. Uh, I would like to see us talk about, uh, financing of the breathing apparatus and the, uh, fire trucks first. Um, either yay or nay on that, that kind of identifies a month, that'll help identify a number, almost a policy also, and then go to the second subject, as she mentioned, that would be the firehouse, uh, size or even design.
Other comments, thoughts you want to support or go a different direction?
I think we need to talk about the, the big item on the table. I mean, the fire station, if you don't have a fire station, we don't have a bond. So I think we need to get the fire station, uh, discussed and move forward, and then we can talk about the additional. But until we have agreement that we want to have a fire station, um, which, you know, we've talked about extensively that we do need one, hence this conversation at all, but I think that has to be decided first, or we might not, we might as well not even talk about the other two components.
Debbie?
I think, given that, that many of us here had the chance to spend multiple hours discussing this a few weeks ago, and, and Councilmember Siro was unfortunately not present, Mike, how would you like to proceed? I mean, are you questioning?
I would like to proceed with, uh, talking about the, um, the, the fire trucks and the breathing apparatus first, and then going into the firehouse.
Okay, so we're talking the structure of the conversation, so I see Jane shaking her head, I heard Tana, uh, suggests she'd prefer to do fire station first. So let's do a quick, uh, thumbs up, thumbs down on which way we're going on this, and then we'll, we'll enter into that portion of the discussion. So all those in favor of doing, uh, the subsidiary things, the SCBAs and the fire trucks first? Signal. Okay? And opposed, and those in favor of doing the fire station first? Okay, so fire station, we do first.
How did I look on TV?
The Roman vote? We're in favor. So, um, I, I think there really is just, I think, a straightforward question here, which is, are we comfortable with the amount that has been, uh, put forth by the Miller Hall design as, as it stands now, or do we want to rethink that in some fashion? Go ahead, somebody else can go. Dan, you're up.
Yeah, I, I think it's, for purposes of what we've got now, I think it's perfectly appropriate. I think that, um, you know, I, I've made no secret that I, I'd like to see the size of this thing reduced, and, and hope that as we, if the voters approve this, that we will still have that opportunity to do that. Just because we've authorized the money, if there's a few hundred thousand dollars left on the table, we don't have to spend it. So it's, it's, if, I think we should, but it, I fully agree, it doesn't make sense to spend two hundred thousand dollars trying to finish up a design on something we don't know yet whether the voters are going to approve, because that, that's just, that's not the way to, to waste, not the way to spend taxpayer money. So we, we should, I'm, as long as we have the understanding that we can go back at this after November, if it gets approved, and, and make final decisions on the design before it goes out to bid, then I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think that's, um, not the advisable way to go, because, um, once we get the money, then, then our, um, we may, will look at the design differently than if we don't have the money yet and we still have to sell it to the, um, to our citizens. So I have issues with the, with the size, you know, the, the value is what I look, I think, um, it's too expensive, given what we need, um, to the present replacement of the, of the station. So we're almost doubling, um, the size of that station, fire station ninety-two from what it is. So when I look at it, I see questionable space of, you know, four hundred and fifty-nine square feet, receiving room, meeting room, lobby, day room, extra room, you know, that, that equals almost, uh, seven hundred and fifty square feet. Um, three, seven hundred and fifty. And then if you were to really, if, to really, uh, sharpen the pencil, uh, get it down to a single story, that's where the huge savings are, because you lose the stairs, you lose the lift, and both the extra, um, mechanical and whatnot. And, uh, if you really get down to a single floor, uh, then you're talking, uh, savings of almost, uh, five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, which is significant money in addition to, uh, the size, what the folks are going to see there, um, versus a two-story eighty-two hundred square foot facility.
Yep.
Okay, Tana?
Um, Mike, the, the questions that you're raising are really great, and I've said they were actually all raised at the mini planning session, um, because we had that, we had those exact discussions, and we were all really interested in trying to get to one story and eliminate the staircase and everything like that. And the architect, uh, firm who's not here present, so I kind of feel a little bit awkward talking, really specific about designs without them here, they, they went through all of those, they had, um, alternatives, and they had, uh, graphs and things showing us that different, those different considerations would either neither save money, or were not possible, or did not, um, we would have to give up other serious things at the far, uh, that we decided as a group, like a three-bay versus a two-bay, that we didn't want to do. So they're all really good points that you raised, and I'm sad that you weren't there at the retreat, but, and that the architecture firm isn't here, but we did address those concerns, and I, so I'm very comfortable with what we came up with, and, um...
Well, remember, and, and I appreciate, uh, that, and I apologize for that, but, you know, uh, members not being, members being absent, that's, that happens all the time, and oftentimes, uh, we do reinvent the wheel. So that's just, uh, the, the dirty democracy that we have. But as with any planning session, no decisions were made. I mean, we don't make decisions at planning sessions. So as far as from a point of order, this is the first forum to discuss it and make a decision, one way or the other.
So, so let me, let me suggest, so, um, Mike's in favor of a significantly reduced structure. We don't have the architects here, uh, we could have some response from Chris, but the rest of us have, have heard this, um, to at least some degree. Um, Tana's said she stands at leave it as is, Dan said he's, he stands at leave it as is. Um, I'm inclined to ask for a vote of council on this, um, but I want to make sure everybody has a say before we get to that, so.
Well, I just want to point out, too, that we've been over this several times, there's been open houses, um, at least two times we've heard presentations from the architects. And, um, adding on, um, floor space on one level is, actually makes it more expensive than adding on a second story. I just happen to know that. But I, I think it's time to move on. We've, we can tinker a little bit with size, but not much, because that really gets into the programming. And we've had Chief Tubbs go through several exercises with his, uh, staff and other firefighters and with the architects, looking at where they could pare down, how they could, um, utilize one space several different ways. And we are, it's a very nice size, it's a right-sized station. Um, we're building not for the next five or ten years, but the next fifty years, and I would hate to assume that we're all architects and can, uh, design something better. We do need an entryway space, uh, it's small, and we do, we do need those spaces, and I really object to sitting up here and trying to tell the architects how to do their job.
Oh, I don't mind it at all, I don't mind it at all. All right, Debbie, you're up.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm ready to move forward in principle with the size that we outlined. And again, just to summarize, that we can't compare the design with the current fire station that we have, it's woefully inadequate. I think anybody who's walked through that during the course of an open house, or even perhaps a personal emergency, recognizes the extreme inadequacies, inadequacies, both in terms of functionality, which certainly then is also translated into, into a space issue. We've done significant comparison with other communities of similar need. I think in fact, on average, our size came in smaller than theirs, which should be noted. Um, Chief Tubbs and his team actually had a list of items that they willingly removed, and in fact articulated how they would compromise the south-end size to leverage some of the facilities and equipment that actually exists on the north end, which I thought was also quite commendable. So there was a great deal, not just of, um, let's make this smaller, but I think some very strategic thinking in terms of what functionality and programming did need to say, and what that impact was in terms of size. The other pieces, we can talk about looking at that budget, and if we take out X number of thousands of square feet, that that will reduce the cost by Y. Well, that presumes that there's a linear relationship between total square footage and cost per square foot. As we know, the most expensive square feet are probably the first hundred, thousand, two thousand, and beyond that, it is not a directly proportionate relationship. So before we start throwing away, there could be, around, that there could be savings of X thousand or five hundred here and there, I think we would absolutely have to have some serious analysis done by the design firm to confirm that. Um, so I think that what we've done, both as a team here with the architects, the comparative elements or aspects that they've conducted with other communities, with Chief Tubbs, and I'm sure firefighters who have experience beyond Mercer Island, come up with what is a very reasonable, balanced, somewhat frugal, um, facility. And yes, we will need to tweak it and continue to look at it as the design comes in, assuming that it's passed. But in principle, I am quite comfortable that there has been due diligence on the size and funding behind this.
Okay. So I, and I share, uh, that sense, I think, um, I guess my, my starting point is we're building for the next fifty years, not the next few years, and, uh, we've, we've got to build something that has, uh, a bit of flexibility in it, so that we aren't building something we're going to regret having cut corners on in the near term. So I think we've got, uh, essentially a shell around this project at this point that allows us to do that. We'll figure out the details within that shell and drive Chris and the architects crazy as we do that later on, but I think what we have right now makes sense.
Well, maybe I have a question of, uh, Chief Tubbs, maybe he can answer it. So for two point two million dollars, uh, Fire Station Thirty-Seven, they built for two hundred and seventy-four, um, dollars per square feet versus our three sixty-four. Any feel for why the big difference?
Who would they be in this case, Mike?
Well, they would be, uh, Miller Hall would be the appropriate person to answer that, but that's an example in here of the, of, uh, one of the fire stations that they used in here, uh, two seventy-four. So too often what we do is we find an average of a bunch of things, and that's how we, we grow, 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 grow things, just justifying it on, we're hitting the midpoint, we're hitting the average, which continues to increase. Uh, so what I thought was...
You, you sort of teed that up as a question for Chief Tubbs. I want to give him the opportunity to address it if he thinks that that one's fair for him, but it sounds like it's really a question for Miller.
Okay, if it's not fair, it's more Miller.
Not for me, it's for Miller.
So, um, you know, I would, I would, uh, eighty-two hundred times, uh, two hundred and seventy-four is two point two million dollars, round that to two point five million dollars. Uh, that's what I, uh, like to make a, a motion for.
Is that just hard cost, or is that hard and soft cost also?
Uh, you know what I, what I, that's...
Is your soft cost about a third of your hard cost?
Actually, it's more than that. Let's see, does the three sixty-four, that is the extended cost? Three sixty-four is extended cost?
That's construction.
That's construction cost?
I don't know.
Well, yeah. That's my, that's my concern. Um, we're bringing in a, a station of three hundred and sixty-four per square foot, and there's one out there that was in here at two hundred and seventy-four. It's just Fire Station Ninety-two down on the south end. Uh, as far as planning for the future, uh, fifty years, um, you know, we'll have, we've had three firefighters down there for a long, long time, we'll continue to have three firefighters down there for a long, 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 long time. Um, especially as we become, um, the transition in our residential areas with more and more fire sprinklers, whatnot, I don't, I don't see that firehouse having increasing demand for it.
Okay. So with that, with that, um, one, we don't need a formal vote, if, uh, sort of Roman vote is the right way to approach this at this point, or you, you want? I, I'm not sure how to, how to take these pieces and move forward. I mean, the average is five, four, sticking with the numbers we have, one against, we're trying to give direction to staff, so how do you, how do you want the direction?
Well, ultimately, all we're looking for is, uh, direction to come back with, yeah, a levy ordinance, so, uh, we need to, you need to give us a number, and...
You, you've heard from five of us that the number is the number that has been presented to us.
Okay, well, then that's, that's what we'll come back. But with the fire station, you still have some other things to talk about.
Right, that's right, we're, we're moving on to that now.
So, you know, you, we already have the direction for piece one that we need.
So on to piece two, which as it stands today is, uh, fire truck replacement for nine years and SCB equipment replacement, uh, which is, well, I shouldn't say for nine years, the SCBAs are for a shorter period of time. So anybody want to talk about that? I know that I've had conversations with some members of the public who have been a little squirmy about this, feeling that there was a bundling going on, and a sense that, uh, keeping this simple was the right thing to do. Uh, so I've, I've, especially over summer celebration, there was plenty of time to be listening to citizens and talking, um, and I've cooked that one around in my head, haven't figured out exactly where I land on it, but this idea of the rescue truck as something that needs to be done soon, uh, seemed like it had some appeal. I think that ties in with, um, shrinking this down a little bit. It also, uh, makes this very concrete in terms of what it is that we are doing, rather than a somewhat more abstract, uh, plug a hole in our sinking fund, which is a little bit harder for voters to, um, grasp. But Chip and I started to have a conversation about this at the beginning of the meeting, and I, I think Chip was fairly passionately opposed to that idea. So, um, I'm teeing that up, and I'm going to ask Chip to tell me why that's a horrible idea here, uh, if he's willing. And, uh, brothers, I welcome your input on this, too. Dan says I've gone in bad direction, so, I love the body language. All right, Dan, why don't you speak?
Sure, I, I think you're going fine. I think that, you know, it's purely a policy decision now as to what we want to do in this levy, for all the reasons that you indicated, that, that, you know, when we, we talked about this at the planning session, and we were trying to, um, address what we saw as future funding gaps that the city had relating specifically to the operation of its fire, fire, um, fighting, um, personnel. And it's very clear, for example, that when it comes to this breathing apparatus, that you can't send firefighters into a fire without properly functioning breathing apparatus. Um, it's very clear that you can't do many of the things that the firefighters are required to do without a properly functioning rescue truck. Um, you can't, you can't put water on a fire without your Maxis and your Minis. So we, we all understand that it, it is sort of nonsensical to build a fire station without the equipment to put in it and operate, otherwise we will have, as Mike suggested, a fire station with three firefighters in it, and they can all be sitting there and, and watching TV, um, because that's about all the equipment they'll have in the fire station. So I, I, I think that, I think that we all thought at the planning session, we needed to make sure that they were taking, that this was addressed. I think, though, that the discussions we've had since then with, with people we know has, you know, forced us to say, okay, well, so how do you explain... so how do you explain this to the electorate as to what you're doing? And do you say, well, I'm funding a sinking fund and I'm funding breathing apparatus, which you really don't need to buy until 2018. So why am I putting in money now? That those are all very, they're all explainable questions, but in this political atmosphere right now, it's, it's something that we probably, it's not worth risking the fire station on ambiguities. Um, so I, I think what you were heading towards, the idea of, of specifically identifying the rescue truck, which has to be purchased next year according to the schedule and has a very finite cost that staff has already calculated. Um, that, that's something that's very easy to explain. Our rescue truck now was bought, as I understand, in 1996. So it is, it is essentially going to be almost, um, um, almost 20 years old by the time we, we get around replacing it. Um, that's, I think any, any person, um, if you ask them whether they expect the vehicle to last near 20 years, I think you get a very straightforward answer that that's not a reasonable expectation, yet that's what we're now dealing with, with our, with our firefighters. So I, I think what you said before makes perfectly good sense that we should focus on, on, look at the rescue truck. It's a finite piece of equipment. It's a finite cost. It has to be bought next year. The payments start the following year under Chip's assumptions. It's very easy to explain. So you get the fire station and the rescue truck. And it, to me, it's, it's a, it's, it's something that, that, um, I, I think the people on this island will support to replace a 50-year-old fire station and an almost 20-year-old rescue truck.
Okay, others. Debbie?
I'm just going to comment that I, that I do fully support Councilmember Grass's position. I would be very loath to sit here one year from now going through a budget, trying to find the money to pay for that truck when we knew in advance that it was necessary and that we had the opportunity to logically associate it with the fire station. It's about having appropriate level of facilities and appropriate level of equipment, um, both for the residents on this island, but also to secure the safety of the firefighters who are working on our behalf. I very often go back in my mind to the conversation or to the presentation that we had from Chief Tubbs when he talked about the engine that lost its brakes going down 24th. And that is just not a situation that I want to face or have a conversation about a mere 12 to 15 months from now. So I feel very, very strongly about the fire station itself. I feel very, very strongly about the, uh, rescue truck and maintaining that level of equipment. Um, and I think again, it does get a little bit more difficult and somewhat murkier with the breathing apparatus. Um, as much as I'd like to see that in there, I do feel that those first two points are the essentials.
Okay. Jane, are you ready?
Um, yes. I, um, I agree with Debbie in a lot of ways. I think, um, I don't want to risk the fire station for, um, people being confused, assuming that we're sort of, um, uh, doing some bundling that is difficult to explain. It's confusing. Uh, and I've already heard people saying, oh, well, I want a fire station, but I don't want those other things. And, um, so I, I really think that I, it's not worth risking the fire station. But if we, uh, the, um, the rescue truck, smaller item, it's needed within two years, we should, that's very clear. And it is all public safety. That is our number one mission. So I, I would definitely support those. I personally believe though, that, you know, we, we should be able to say yes to what's before us, but if, well, it makes practical sense, but maybe not political sense. And I would not want to, uh, give anyone ammunition to say, well, I'm not voting for the fire station because it's got those other things and I don't understand that and I'm going to vote no. So I think we need to be prudent and this is very easy to explain. We need the fire station and we need the rescue truck.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're missing the point here. This is a major, major policy decision on how we manage the budget and how we prioritize the budget. All of you have given good explanations on the importance of this firefighting equipment, the breathing apparatus and the fire trucks. And you've shown your passion on how you prioritize it, how you think it's important for the public safety, and you've implied that it is a priority. So what I'm saying here by completely taking the fire trucks and the breathing apparatus out is a major, major budget policy decision that we're telling staff going forward. And that is a respect for the importance and the priority for a fantastic program that this council did in 2003 with the establishment of the sinking fund. That was a fan, that is a fantastic program of very fine fiscal discipline on financing that which is of most importance first. And that is that we would consistently put into the sinking fund. Now, that the interest income dried up is irrelevant to this discussion. It's irrelevant to this discussion. The issue is, is that we had a sinking fund for a priority program, replacement of fire trucks and breathing apparatus, and funds should have gone into that first and foremost before anything else. We were briefed or, or should go into that first and foremost. So what you're saying is that we didn't respect that very good policy or we're not going to respect that very good policy of the sinking fund, and we're going to use the monies that would have gone to the sinking funds for other things of lesser consequence, of lesser importance. And that's not the way, that's not a good policy to set. We started that sinking fund in 2003. We were financing it until 2009 with interest income or 2008?
Uh, still are, right?
No. Since 2009, no interest income.
Okay. So we started out financing it 2008 with, uh, with the 1% property tax and, um, the sink, and the interest income. In 2009, the interest income went, went away. And actually in 2008, we took, um, Sewer Lake, no, we took the savings from a fire truck. We took the savings from a fire truck in 2008, fully knowing or certainly anticipating the interest income would dry up and we spent it on something else. So we, we have a habit, we are showing a propensity of taking funds from fire trucks and from the sinking funds and using it for something else. In this case, it was the maintenance department for blades and de-icing. Good, good things and stuff, but still, fire trucks, de-icing, fire trucks, doesn't, 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 doesn't compute. Okay? So we need to take the fire trucks and breathing apparatus off this bill for a couple, one, off this, one for a couple reasons. One, to make it real clean for citizens out there on the levy. And two, to reinforce going forward, the importance that we have in fully funding that sinking fund first and foremost. You know, if we identify a pot for the sinking fund and it dries up, we don't not finance a sinking fund. We find another silo, another pot of funds to make the sinking fund right. That's the message that we need to send right here. And the third reason?
We'll come back to you.
Uh, yeah.
You got it, Bill?
No, that's it.
Okay. Tana?
I think it's important to talk about the history of how we funded the fire vehicles in the first place. Uh, I mean, 20 years ago, we had one bond that paid for the entire fleet. And then after that expired and as that was about to expire, the council at that time made the, and with staff, made the, um, really good decision to, to space it out and to, um, go into a kind of rotation on purchasing. And that was very fiscally responsible. And so they started the sinking fund and they started moving forward with that. But not everything can be done to correct, you know, however many, nine vehicles that we have all in one time, all in one go. In fact, in 2007, they, um, the council at the time did a 1% property tax to help pay for a fire apparatus and then a 0.6 property tax from bank capacity in addition to the 45,000 that was designated for the annual interest, uh, anticipated annual interest revenue. And it was that, those dollars were put into the sinking fund to help pay for fire apparatus. So that, everybody was planning very far ahead. But we weren't necessarily ready or knowing that there was going to be a recession and we are faced with that fact that we have a less amount in there, even given all of our great, or even the council at the time's, they're great forward-looking. And so what we're looking at now is having, adding one apparatus, one rescue truck to this bond instead of the entire fleet that we used to do in the past, to help us continue to achieve that independence from bonds and levies for fire apparatus that the council in 2003 planned to do. But just, you know, it was a great plan, but it didn't necessarily mean it was going to all be perfect and fit, uh, exactly according to plan. We have a little bit of a bump. This is a great opportunity. It makes complete sense to combine a fire station with a fire truck. We're not, you know, taking apples and oranges. This is for fire and public safety, for, um, for, for rescuing people, for, for, you know, all ages, for the safety of our community. To say that this is, you know, an, an add-on or unnecessary or irresponsible is not true. We, this council has been putting off a decision about a new fire station for many, many years. And, uh, it's time to act on that. And I don't want, um, us to sit here and to go away thinking that we could have, um, had a new fire station. We could have had a rescue truck that we really need, but we weren't willing to, and I think the community will support it. We weren't willing to say that that's what we need and we need it.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, it goes to, the statement that we're making is prioritizing funds to where things like public safety and especially the fire trucks, the breathing apparatus, which are so important to the firefighters, to our citizens, comes off first in the budget. And so, you know, I just look at note two, note two here. The reason why it wasn't being funded was it, the, the sinking fund, was because we didn't increase the property tax by 1% in 2010 and 2011. Well, we increased the property tax for 2012. So by one, by 1.5%. So why doesn't that 1% go to the sinking fund for the, we're already taking the monies from our citizens for this priority item. We raised the property tax 1%, 1.5%, but 1% from 2012. In addition, we also increased, we also increased a brand-new tax, FireFire, the ambulance, the ambulance transfer fee. You know, that's another $300,000. So what makes better, you know, if, if the interest income isn't supplying, if the interest income isn't supplying this financing for a priority public safety, look around funds that are already there. I mean, it's a natural that it would be the ambulance transport service, or it's a natural that would come first and foremost from that 1% property increase we just did. It's a natural.
All right. So, yeah, so, um, Rich, Rich, I may also want to weigh in here. You may want to just mutter under his breath to me and, and not go there, but, um, and-
I think I could, if you want me to put this- Put this big picture financing picture for fire trucks. It's a 30-year issue. It's not this year, 2005, 2003. It's a 30-year structure. And I'd have to draw a picture to do it. But I think I could because I, I hear a lot that, uh, it's missing, that the arguments are missing with some very fundamental points.
Well, uh, we don't have room for a picture. Jane, can you, can you do a mental picture here for us? Uh, or, why don't you go ahead with whatever you were going to say?
Um-
Oh, it caused you to blank out.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry.
Well, I think we're getting way off base when we're talking about, um, the transport fee and all sorts of other things. We really need to focus right now on this. We have a need for a brand-new, we have a need for a fire station. Um, and we have these other two needs, the breathing apparatus and fire, fire vehicle replacement. Um, I, I think, I truly believe that all three are absolutely necessary. I would like to see them all on a bond issue. But if, if people will vote against it because there is the bundling, then let us unbundle. Let us go forward with the fire station. Um, is there, this is a question. Um, were we to do a fire station alone in November, could we also have another measure that is separate, a, a separate vote on the, uh, fire truck replacement and the breathing apparatus as a separate ballot issue in November?
Chip, you want to figure it out at that?
What would the cost be to?
I know it would cost more to do that, but in, it will simplify matters perhaps.
I'm not sure.
You, you could, yes, you could have a separate levy. We'd have to calculate what it'd be, it's small, but you could have a separate question for just those pieces. Uh, we'd have to pay our consultants to prepare that for you and, um, I don't know what the cost is, but it's, um, a fit, those costs tend to be fixed amounts and this would be a small yield.
And it was cost.
Yeah.
A lot.
It would be a fairly-
Legally, an inefficient way to achieve it perhaps, but it would-
Absolutely.
It's legal. You could do it.
Okay. Debbie?
I have a, a question for Chip. So let's presume that for whatever reason, we don't end up including the rescue truck. And you come to us next year. What is the difference between what we have in the sinking fund and what we would need to actually buy that rescue truck? Approximately, it doesn't need to be perfect. Is it 100,000, 200, 300?
I'm struggling because what, what happens, if there was no, if there was nothing, if there's nothing in the level of lift for fire apparatus replacement, okay, then that sinking fund goes negative in 2015.
Okay. And how negative, how negative does it go?
There is no, you will not be buying a rescue truck. You will not be buying a mini pumper that's planned in 2016. That, that goes with the natural consequences.
To me, that's the point that I was hoping that you would get to. The point is, we cannot buy the truck, is essentially what you're saying, from the sinking fund.
Right.
That we would have to take those funds from a different portion of the budget, which would be 480,000, 450?
Or, or we would be coming to you more likely to say, you need to raise a new revenue to replace a new asset. It, that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. So just clarifying that what we're talking about is a truck and the value of which is what, approximately 450,000?
Uh, it should be less than that. In today's dollars, it's 400,000, but-
Okay, today's dollars. I think I was doing the extended nine-year thing. Um, so that's essentially what you would come to us and either ask us to find a new revenue source next year, or we would need to take $400,000 from the general fund to pay for it, or we go without a new rescue truck indefinitely. So those are basically the options you're coming to us with.
Or from some other fund.
Let's just say 400,000 from general fund.
No, you said from the general fund. It's not just limited to the general fund. It's from, from other funds.
From, um-
Other legal funds, yeah.
The city-
Other funds tend to be restricted.
We, we want to stay above board. So, I mean-
All right. Dan, I think wanted to weigh in here.
To me, that's very clear. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Yeah, and I fully understand Mike's argument. Um, I, I think where it falls apart though, Mike, is, is the other thing that I'm sure you saw in the, in the material from the planning session, is that, um, financially, we are starting to hurt pretty significantly, um, next year. And it only gets worse year after year after year, to the point where unless we do something rather dramatic, we're looking at seven-figure deficits not that far out. So it is, it is all well and good to say that if we had enough money to meet all of our city needs, yes, we could pre-reprioritize and we could maybe not do some of the nice things that we like to do for, for Islanders. We don't have to do summer celebration. We don't have to do, um, you know, we don't have to maintain our parks as well. We don't have to have lifeguards out there. We can, we can get rid of all those nice things and then maybe we can buy a truck. Um, but we're well beyond that point. Um, if, given the numbers that we're looking at right now, um, if we don't start figuring out where we're going to start, how we're going to pay for these assets, the reprioritizing that you're talking about is not going to just be the nice things. It's not going to just be the communication director, which you hate. It, it's going to be salaries. It's going to be essential services. And, and I don't say that to put the fear, put the fear into anybody, but I say that to just make it clear that you're- you're not reprioritizing between nice things that'd be great to have, but we don't really need, you're prioritizing between things that we need and things that we need. So it's, it's, it's not fair to simply suggest that we can move some money around. Right now, there is no money to move around, and it's only going to get worse year after year. So, yes, we are going to have to look for some more revenue sources, because that's the only way this city maintains its services. You know, one of the, one of the speakers earlier on tonight made the comment that the city should live within its means and shouldn't raise taxes, and it's a very appropriate statement. I think it has to be recognized that the city's means are a 1% tax increase on the property taxes, which is just a percentage of its revenue every year. I think if you were to tell the average islander household that for the next 20 or 30 years, they have to live with what is essentially less than a 1% increase in their total income every year, they would say to you, that can't be done. It is impossible, because there's inflation, because there are many other things which come into play. But that's the law that the city is subject to. So the only way the city gets around that is by going to taxpayers and saying, these are the services we provide to you, do you want to pay for them? And that's exactly what we're talking about doing in this levy, is going to the voters and say, do you want a fire station, and do you want a new truck? And that's, and that's, it's a very simple proposition. But it's not fair to suggest that you were reprioritizing, that we could reprioritize, because that's just not the case, when you look at the numbers.
Well, I mean, I have looked at the number. I've looked at the number, I mean, I have looked at the numbers, and I don't think it's a decision for a, between our lifeguards, or what were some other examples that you used with our, I don't think it's a decision that we're going to lose our lifeguards if we don't do this, or some of the other priority things that you mentioned. You know, so, we are three years and so many months, a couple of months, out of the recession. It's a, it's a terrible recovery, and there's nothing that gives you hope that it's necessarily going to be a V recovery all of a sudden. It's going on this glide path. And Councilmember Grous, I think you started off by saying, we are hurting. The city is hurting. Well, what you are proposing is transferring that hurt from the city to the citizens in the form of taxes. So, for instance, you use lifeguards, this, these are the examples that I'll use. I mean, the arts fund has a balance of, what, 350? We're thinking about doing a six-figure arts, arts thing someplace? I mean...
No, that's not correct.
Fire, fire trucks, arts fund, that's an easy one for me. The beautification fund, that's another one that's, that we have diligently, diligently prioritized in our funding, and it's, it's very healthy. I think there's, there's probably a good $250,000 in there. The ambulance transport fee, I mean, you know, we just passed that last year, where did that money go? You know, that's, that's $300,000 annually. That's a new, that's a new stream of $300,000 annually, and ambulance comes from the firehouse. I can see where those funds would be a natural to go to the sinking fund for our, for our equipment. You know, there's that, that stash of, not stash, but the, the fund for, for lack of a better term, Pyramid Plaza. I mean, what's, what's that balance? That's $200,000 or so? That's just sitting there. We, before we transfer the hurt to our citizens, we need to prioritize so that priority, equipment and expenses like public safety, as fundamental as the fire truck and the breathing apparatus, they get funded first. That's why this is an important policy decision. That's why us as council members are making a statement on which direction we go here, on respecting the sinking fund, and finding the monies for the sinking fund, and presenting a very clean firehouse-only levy.
Okay, so I, let me try at this point, because we've, we've sort of all aired views for, and, let me suggest...
I just have to make a few corrections, if I may, because there's been a lot of misinformation here tonight. I mean, I'm sorry, Mike, but, I'm, okay, well...
Go ahead, and...
I just want to clarify that the, that certain funds have restrictions, and...
What the council giveth, the council can taketh away. Those are self-imposed restrictions. Don't confuse legal restrictions with things that are self-imposed by the council.
Yeah, I had the floor, Mike, if you don't mind. The 1% for arts fund, I don't think is discretionary for the council to spend. That comes from a construction that happens on Mercer Island in, in big projects, and it goes 1% for the arts. And I think it's really pointless to look at a whole bunch of pockets of, of funds in a short-sighted way and say, we can take this money here, and we can take this money here, and I, it's, it's not a good route for us to take as a council. These are policy decisions that we need to sit down and talk about at length at a retreat, perhaps. Right now, we have a decision in front of us about a fire station and a rescue truck. I believe that Mercer Island people vote for things that they see as valuable and important to them, and they're willing to pay for what they see as value. And our job as council people is to help make sure that the policy and what we do up here reflects the values of the people. And I truly believe that having a, not a very, not a, not the fanciest, no Taj Mahal, but an adequate, well-designed fire station that will last for generations, that we can be proud of, is absolutely essential, and I believe that having, obviously, we rely on those fire vehicles to help us, to save us, to put out our fires, and that is an essential service of the city. And I don't want to hear somebody talk about taking art money to buy part of a fire truck. It's not, it's not what we as council members should do, so that's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, you want to go still? Okay, I, just so you guys know, as soon as everybody's vented, as much as they're going to vent, I'm going to put the, what I think are three different proposals on the table and ask for support for one, two, or three, so whenever you're ready.
You know, Mike, you talked about the pain of taxes, and I, I just want to kind of go back to that, because I think there's two, two decision points and two things to look at. I think this council is going to choose if we're going to look at, we're going, we're going to make a choice, and then we're going to let the people make a choice. So there's two decision points. And I would say that we are, so far, the discussion that we're having, the majority of us at this point, is that we understand the pain of taxes, but we understand more the pain of somebody getting stuck in their car because the jaws of life aren't available from the rescue truck. Or the pain of like, the, the neighbor's house who the worker got stuck in the trench, and the rescue truck had to come and take them out of the trench, save their life. Or the dive team with the rescue truck, saving the drowning teenager. And I think those are the pain points that, to me, are more valuable than the pain of taxes. I think if you're looking at Chip's, we're talking about $5 a year, not $5 a month, $5 a year for a rescue truck. And to me, the pain of $5 a year to pay for a rescue truck is a pain I'm willing, and I believe that our citizens are going to be willing to make, in order to make sure that they don't have to deal with the pain of losing somebody through a drowning, or being stuck in a trench, or in some other place, or not being able to be saved from a car wreck that we have on our island, these are all realities, for $5 a year, and this is, they're going to be, we're making a decision where we feel the pain, and then we're going to give citizens a choice where they feel the pain. And I think we're banking that people don't want to feel the pain, would rather feel the $5 pain of taxes than the pain caused by any of those situations where the firefighters are unable to get to them with the proper equipment.
Okay, three options I'm aware of. Option one is what's in the agenda bill. So it's the SCBA's and $99,000 a year to plug the sinking fund hole. Option two is rescue truck only, and option three would be what I see, I think Mike is keying up, which is fire station only. And so I should say rescue truck on top of fire station, and Mike saying nothing on top of fire station. Mike, have I got you right on that?
Yes, I can make a motion of that effect.
Well, I'm not going to ask for a motion, I'm just, right now, we're just doing show, yeah, there's no motion, so this is a show of thumbs up for one, option one, option two, or option three. So, I'm not looking for thumbs down on things, I'm just looking for thumbs up on which one you like. Jane?
Option two is rescue truck and fire station.
Option two.
Together.
Yeah, yeah. Fire station, we've already touched, right? So now we're only talking about what's getting bundled with it, if anything, all right?
[laughing]
All right, so, yes. All right, so, all those in favor of the agenda bill as written with 99, the sinking fund plug and SCBA gear. Anybody? Okay. Option two, the rescue truck only, and option three, nothing on top of the fire station. Okay, so that's where we are. Does anybody have any final words on this? Is there anything else staff, Chip, that you need from us before you can go forth and create?
We'll just amend the ordinance accordingly, as well as the ballot language.
Okay.
So...
Very good. And so with that, we are done with this issue.
Chip, one thing you need to look at in this...
Yeah.
You've got your rescue truck payments out over eight years, so...
Yeah, I know. And so the, the levy amount, add those up, divide them by nine, it's, in round numbers, $54,000 a year is the levy impact, so that's what it would be.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I'm not here to stir the pot.
Sure.
It's okay. I respect your decision. Just so you know, by, by doing what, what you're doing with the rescue truck, the sinking fund, it will go negative in 2016, under the, under the current assumptions of, of things being replaced. And so we're just, we're going to have to deal with, in the future, and one of the options, yes, we could say, we're going to change the model, instead of a five-year replacement, make it a six-year replacement, the Maxis on the minis, instead of an eight-year replacement, it's 10-year replacement. But I'm going with what the council adopted back in 2007, which I've keyed up several times, and the council said, yeah, we want to stick with this model. So just, fair, fair warning, it does go negative in 2016 under the current assumptions.
And absolutely fair for you to tee that up for us, and I think at this point, the direction causes the problem, which now we ask you to offer us at the appropriate time, reasonable solutions, or reasonable ways we can try and solve that, whether it's beautification fund, or whether it's something else.
I always have a Plan B and a Plan C, so...
All right, thank you very much for that. All right, with that, we've gone two hours without a break. We'll take a break, and as soon as everybody is back, hopefully in about 10 minutes or so, we'll reconvene and talk about parking along the Mercers. Thank you. Thank you.
Cue video.
All right. We're going to go ahead and start. Dan will be back shortly, I am sure. So, back to order. Okay, we are on item six, Agenda Bill four seven five two, Parking Along the Mercer Ways Revisited. Ann, you going to have a presentation for us on this? Or are you going to just throw it back to us and say?
But I can tee it up just a little bit.
Okay.
From when we met last time, we postponed making the decision on what to do on Mercer Ways. And out of that discussion, the council proposed five criteria, five considerations to apply to Mercer Ways to effectively look at where, when, and why and how parking restrictions might occur on the Mercer Ways. So with that information, I took that information and tried to apply something again to how we might restrict parking on the Mercer Ways. In addition to that piece of paper, there was a part of that which is to convene a committee to discuss other pieces to what we might do for bicycle pedestrian safety, probably not just focused on the Mercer Ways, although that was the intent of this, but it might be applied island-wide as well. So since that meeting and since this agenda was prepared, we've also had a group of citizens, residents, do their own independent analysis of what's happening on the Mercer Ways, and they've come up with some ideas and some thoughts, which I know that they have shared with you. So, in all honesty, I was looking at tonight's meeting as further discussion, hence the revisiting part of the discussion on the Mercer Ways, to give the council another opportunity to discuss, to provide feedback, to provide some direction on where we, where staff should take this Mercer Way conversation.
Anybody want to ask questions before we come back and start discussion on this? No questions. Okay. Uh. Yeah, I'm not sure where to start on this. Okay, so we're going to go directly to discussion. And Ann, you're off the hook for the moment, although I'm sure you'll get pulled back in here.
I will not go far.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry. And maybe our acting city attorney knows the answer to this. Ann, you had made the comment in one discussion that we had, that staff, you thought that staff's authority to put in, I mean, let me back up. There's obviously places on the Mercers already where we have no parking.
Correct.
And staff made the decision for safety reasons, or for safety reasons, to make those areas no parking. And obviously, council didn't tell you, make that specific block no parking, you just made that decision. So the question came up, well, how far does that authority go? And you made the comment, you thought that the, that you could not sign more than a hundred feet without council direction or ordinance or something. And at the time, it wasn't clear what was underlying that, you know, what the authority was for that restriction. And I don't, are you, I don't know if you've had a chance to think about that, or the acting city attorney might have any idea what that might be behind that?
I do, and can weigh in if you'd like. The Model Traffic Ordinance provides traffic engineer authority to sign based on very specific traffic warrants. Broad, general areas are typically a legislative prerogative. So the Model Traffic Ordinance, let's say, sets out twelve specific situations, within so many feet of a corner, within so many feet of certain kinds of bus stops and areas. Otherwise, the general legislative discretion resides in the council.
But is there a specific reference to a hundred feet, or is that, that's not?
Uh, you know, I'd have, I'd have to check and be glad to grab the statute and take a look as we talk.
So there's one question. Any other questions? We've come back to discussion.
I kind of think we're, we're Councilmember Grouse's, and I just kind of alert you, you know, it's kind of like project manager, project financing. People get in trouble if they finance a big project in little, small increments that are within their authority. So I kind of, I understand where you're going with that, and I would hope that the staff doesn't look, if they have authority to do a hundred feet, that we wouldn't do a hundred feet a bunch of times to get the.
You misinterpreted completely what I was suggesting, but, and so, yeah, all I'm trying to understand is that this process started out with a sweeping ordinance that we had directed staff to come back with. And so the question then becomes what, you know, if, the council obviously is not going to do anything final tonight, we've made that very clear to people. But, so we understand what our options are going forward. What I wanted to know is whether, if we decide to do no parking on any of the Mercers, do we need to do that by ordinance? Or does the staff have that authority already? That's, that was the purpose of my question, to understand what we actually have to do here, should we decide that there is some reason to do something. So that's the only purpose of it.
Okay. So we come back for discussion. And as I said, Ann, you're off the hook for the moment, and we'll, we'll come back to you probably fairly quickly. So Debbie.
When we first introduced this discussion back in February, it was very much about the Mercer Ways and safety and the no parking on the improved shoulders. And I think what we all saw happen was that the nature of the question changed. And where we ended up in March was to be discussing general safety on the Mercer Ways, both pertaining to the inside shoulders that had been repaved, but also we introduced concerns that other community members had raised regarding other parts of the Mercers and perhaps even other parts of the island. And at that point, we also made the decision to convene a committee of yourself, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and then a variety of residents with differing interests. And with that in mind, I feel that we should table, postpone this conversation until we've given that committee the chance to come back after meeting and discussing a broad set of safety issues, which we've essentially started to outline here, that could, should perhaps include discussion of parking on the Mercer Ways. But right now, I feel that we're some, we have something of a moving target. When I look at what we have here as a consequence of the direction that we did give to staff, it's even more confusing. And in fact, I think in some ways, it becomes almost more restrictive than it originally started out to be. I don't want to lose sight of the original intent, and that is to improve safety of pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists. But I'm not sure that we have consensus as to what exactly that entails beyond the paving on the shoulders. I think we've convened, or said we would convene a committee. I think we owe them the respect and legitimacy to give them time, come back with recommendations. And in fact, I think in our last meeting, we even indicated that there's money in that budget that would be directed towards continuing the shoulder improvements, but not necessarily or exclusively for that. So with that, I'd like to see us postpone and table this conversation until after we have a report from that committee. I think we're getting ourselves in knots up here.
Okay. Others? Jane?
I concur with Debbie, and I believe that, well, I would like to personally thank Joe Baer for doing an amazing study. He analyzed every single bicycle accident on the island since 2001 and found that of 142 reported accidents over 11 years, none have cited a parked car on any of the Mercer Ways as a contributing factor. His study goes way beyond this and suggests some areas where there are some bicycle safety problems, other intersections. But we may have a bicycle safety problem, but it's not on the Mercers. And parking is not contributing to a problem with bicycle safety. So I would like to postpone until we convene a committee. I like the suggestion of one of the audience members, that someone from the north, south, and east and west of the island also be included on this committee, that would include cyclists, pedestrians, motorists as well, to look at Joe Baer's study and look at issues and paving on the Mercers. And I think we heard clearly from citizens in the last number of months that this is, this is not a problem, and having a blanket prohibition of parking is not an answer.
Okay. Others?
Mike?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at Jim Stanton's email to all the council member, and he's just got some great comments here. And I think what we need to show the community is action. They want safety. If the staff would verify Joe's data and validate the five hotspots that we have, I would like to see the direction that we give to staff to be, one, is to drop this parking thing on Mercer, on the Mercers. But show progress, and what that, and progress in addressing safety. Safety that, given this report, I'm saying, we know is, is the low fruit. That's what you do. You hit the low fruit first. Let's fix the low fruit, let's see if we can fix the low fruit problem first, i.e. those five intersections that Jane talked about. Let's, let's direct staff to get out there and give us solutions to those five hotspots. And then let's see where we are. You know, things happen sequentially. You know, the standard, the standard response in government for a problem is, let's do a committee. Let's not do the standard. Let's, we have a problem identified, we know there's some low fruit on those five intersections. Let's send staff out there to fix those problems. You know, in the way, it'll take six or seven months, and then we'll see where we are.
Okay. Tana, you want to take a shot at this? Dan, you want to take a shot at this?
It's clear the council's not going to do anything tonight on this, given that three members of the council have already spoken and said that, at best, we're going to postpone this thing in terms of making any substantive decisions. And if Mike had his way, we would just take it off the table completely. The, apparently Jane as well.
So much for a whisper.
You know, the, I, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to convince anyone to the, to the contrary, other than to point out a couple of things. First, the obvious, that where there were no shoulders before, and there are shoulders now, no one can sit there and say, you're taking away my parking. The shoulders are not put in for parking. No one ever can say that in any city council resolution that was ever passed, that there was ever a discussion of parking in those shoulders. Never, not once. So the suggestion that we have created, that we're taking away something that was not, that was put in there to create parking, is not correct. There are areas, and I'm the first to acknowledge it, which used to be gravel shoulders, which have been paved over. And I think we can all agree as a council, that to the extent that we've turned gravel into pavement, that it would be inappropriate to take away something which existed before. And I don't think there's any argument about that. But so it gets down to the safety issue. What staff did on this piece of work that's here is exactly what this council directed it to do, which is to look at this from a safety perspective and say, what do we need to do to address the problem of blind curves? To address the problem where the shoulders are not wide enough to park? But due to a, due to the current status of Mercer Island ordinances, it is actually legal to park on those narrow shoulders, believe it or not, because we don't have anything in our books which prohibits people straddling fog lines or straddling buttons. You can park across them, which I think most of us didn't know before. So it's, we have a situation out there right now where there are some potential safety issues. And I just see some in the audience sort of pointing why, said what it is. Our ordinances now prevent you from parking within a certain number of feet of the center line of the road. So if it happens that you can park and straddle a fog line but not be within that number of feet from the center line of the road, it's perfectly legal to park there, even though you're straddling a fog line. Now, would or should anyone ever do that? Of course not. Or should anyone do it? Of course not. But can they legally do it? Yes. So that's the problem we've got right now. So what, what staff went in there and said, okay, we've got these issues, and I think we can all agree that it doesn't, it's not particularly bright to park on a blind curve. And maybe Joe's report is entirely right, and there's never been an accident, but, you know, so at some point, a year from now, two years from now, 10 years from now, there is an accident. So everyone's going to come back to the council and say, okay, now we've had an accident, so now we've got to do something. No, that's not the way you do policy. You know, you try to address safety problems before they come up. But again, we're not going to do this tonight, and I'm hoping that when this committee, which hasn't even been named yet, is named and does come back and looks at this purely from a safety standpoint, that we'll end up with a result which makes sense. Because we shouldn't need to wait for the first accident to happen to do the obvious, which is, don't let people park on blind curves. Shouldn't have to wait for that. We shouldn't have to wait for the first accident to occur to say, don't straddle a fog line. That's our job is up here, to make, to give, empower staff to make sure they can deal with safety issues outside of the politics of, that's my parking space, I don't want those people from off-island coming on, they're terrible people, you know, they don't pay taxes here. So, I mean, that, then that's what the argument's degenerated to. That's not the way it should be. We don't go to Bellevue and they say, oh, those are islanders, we don't want them here. How awful would that be? Are we that xenophobic about it? You know, it's for safety, and the whole discussion should be about safety at this point, and coming up with the right solution to address safety concerns. So we'll go through the committee, and the committee will come back to the council, and this council, in its wisdom, will, will make whatever decision is appropriate. But, I mean, I just feel so strongly about this one that, you know, I, I sort of feel like, you know, from, from a lawyerly standpoint, which I try not to do, because when Katie's here, she gets upset with that. You know, it's like, in some ways, we create an attractive nuisance out there from the city's perspective, in that we've got these shoulders, and it's just encouraging people to park in there. And someday, we're going to regret that. And it's, I'm just, I, I'm very concerned about that. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Dan. Tana, do you want to take a shot?
Yeah, I think everybody said, you know, I just wanted to nod, because I think we're, our discussion's going in the right direction. I think calling this parking on the Mercers is now a misnomer. I don't think that's what we're. I don't think that's what we're looking at. I think we're trying to look at how we can make all the Mercers safer in certain parts. I think blanketly, taking away parking is not the way to go. And I think unfortunately, looking at the great work of the staff here, you can't identify a policy from this, and so I think that's confusing, so I don't think that's the way to go. So I think that, I'm looking forward to hearing what the committee comes up with. I think as you go along the Mercers, I think if you look at a lot of the signage that's up there, when, when we asked, well, where did those signs come from, no parking signs, most of them were initiated from the residents right by those no parking signs, and they didn't want people parking right near their driveway, or right near their, their road, because it wasn't safe, because they wouldn't be, they couldn't see coming out of their road, or out of their driveway. And so I think the, so I don't want to take away the staff's ability to put up a sign somewhere where it's unsafe, because I think that's what the city should do, and we don't need the council to do that, that's what staff should do. And I want to hear, I think we want to hear from people in the community, cyclists, walkers, drivers, residents, what parts are unsafe, and, and let's address those places and, and move forward on that. I agree, I don't want to wait for an accident, but I also don't think we need to, you know, create something that, to address something that doesn't totally need to be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Let me offer some comments, too. So, where to start? Public input on this has been great, in the sense that we have had a lot of it, and that is a valuable thing for us. I've tried hard to make sure that those who spoke up the first time around were notified and got a chance to speak up the second time around, too. And it seems that a fair number did. An awful lot of folks went quiet after the, after the first time around, and maybe they're on traveling, or maybe they looked at the revised version and said, eh, looks okay to me now, as I see it. So I think we've, we've done a reasonable job of being communicative with the public on this. The, the one thing that Dan highlights, I guess it's part of where the committee's supposed to go, and I just want to say it again, is I get very uncomfortable when the conversations turns, turns to an us versus them. A us, drivers versus them, cyclists. Not a healthy conversation in my mind at all. And your average cyclist is a driver, too. Some of those cyclists are off-island, certainly. Some of the cyclists are on-island. I'm, I'm one who rides the island myself fairly frequently, and so, you know, could be, could be me that's driving you crazy if, if you're trying to go a lot faster than I am, not some off-island person who's not paying taxes. So I, I think that this committee that we've, the idea of the committee that we've teed up, trying to pull these different groups together, is, I, I, I'm hearing support for it, we've heard support for it in the past, seems like it's a good place to go. What we're talking about tonight is expanding the role of it, because we hadn't talked about it having any role in this parking question previously. But I think what we're talking about now is that, let's pump this parking question over to that committee and expand its responsibility a little bit. So I, I support that. I think that makes sense. I don't know that, you know, exactly what it ends up doing with that, but tying it together with what the work Joe Baer's done, I mean, Joe, I think gets a lot of credit for having put together a very thoughtful and thorough analysis of the situation out there. And as he took me through it, and as he's taken several others through it, I was impressed by the, by the thoughtfulness, by the, by the work that was done. And I'll be certainly looking to him to be involved further in this conversation about how we, how we move past us versus them, and into a conversation that's about, how do all of us get along best, and how do all of us do that in a way that's safest, and how do all of us do that in a way that's least annoying to each other? Because if, if I'm the cyclist and I've got an annoyed driver behind me, I don't want, I don't want an annoyed driver behind me any more than the driver wants to be annoyed behind me, if I'm riding, and vice versa. So, and I, and I will depart here for just a second. So we vacationed in Colorado a couple of weeks ago, and I saw signage there that said, ride single file. And I'm going to ask staff, not, wouldn't be fair to ask you tonight, whether, can we put up signage like that? And I tie that together with, I also drove behind a couple of cyclists who rode to a breast and made no effort whatsoever to get to single file, as I came up behind them not too long ago. And I thought to myself, you just, you're causing the problem here. And, and so I, I tee this up as, as, you know, I, I see both sides of this, and think we need to be thoughtful about both sides of this. So I like the idea of the committee. I'm happy with the idea that we, we set this aside for right now. We've had a lot of public input coming from different positions on this, but it's pretty clear to me right now that a committee probably makes good sense, and I'm happy to go there. So with that, Jane was up first, and then Debbie. And, and Mike?
It just occurred to me that, I remember the agenda bill that we were first presented with, and the staff's recommendation at that point was to not do anything except to leave it to the staff to monitor some of the trouble spots where people were parking on one of the Mercers inappropriately. And so I, I would hope that this committee could work with the staff to identify those areas where there've been problem parkers who were chronically there, and then also take a look at blind corners where signage would be appropriate, no parking any time. And perhaps single file parking, signage once in a while would be a good idea. Of course, I'm not crazy about lots of new signs unnecessarily, but I think the, the committee can have an expanded role of looking not just at bicycle safety all over the island, but also the Mercers in those trouble spots where there should be signs, no parking.
Debbie?
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I thank the many members of the public, the conversations that we've had here on council for, for months and months. And I think, to Dan's point, nobody wants to be negligent. Nobody wants to do anything that would encourage any sort of accident for lack of action. I do feel that we are taking steps to take considered action. I like the idea of a committee. To, to Mike's point, I don't think that's all we're planning to do. I think Joe's presentation, which I hope will be available publicly on our website, is a great starting point, and in fact, that we could have staff and/or that committee start with this, as some immediate and potential quick wins. So I, I'm comfortable. I'm comfortable with where we are, and I just hope that everybody does realize that this is a delicate balance between ensuring the safety of multiple modes of transportation on this island, as well as, as recognizing some of the basic livability concerns, shall we say.
Thank you. Mike?
Anyways, Mayor, I'm going to kind of use the logic that Councilmember Grouse is using. You know, we know, we know that next year, or this year, some 12-month period, we're going to have, we're going to have about three accidents at these five intersections. I would like to see the support in the council, I'd like, Mr. Mayor, for you to see the support in the council, to direct staff to validate Joe's report, and then, and then, and then full speed ahead on analyzing those five intersections and fixing, and giving us a suggestion on how to fix those five intersections. We know in the next 12 months, there's going to be three accidents there, you know, from the data, so that prioritizes it. You do a committee, you know all the committee, who would, who would not, who would not want to prioritize those five intersections? We don't need a committee to do that. Let's show commitment to addressing safety issues, the low fruit's been identified, let's, let's, let's direct the staff's limited budget, a limited time, to fixing these five intersections. And then, if they validate the report that's here, going on to the next pareto, we're the next, we're the next high-frequency accident issue.
Dan, can I ask you to sort of comment on Councilmember Siro's suggestion? Does it leave you cold?
Which part?
Well, there's two parts to it. So one is essentially verifying the, the content of the report, and second part is then assessing situation at those, assuming that the assessment leads you to the same conclusion, then coming back with suggestions, or taking action without council micromanagement at those points.
From staff perspective, I don't think I need your direction to analyze the intersections, because that's really staff's responsibility. These intersections that have been identified don't, aren't necessarily a surprise, because they're fairly high-volume intersections spread out around the island. So, that being said, given that it's identified as it is in this report, that would be the next step that staff would take, is to look at each of the intersections in, a little more in-depth, and apply some engineering fundamentals, and see what we should or could do to address whatever it is that the accidents are that are occurring. Some accidents are not correctable, others are, and we just have to figure out what those are.
Okay. So, yeah, I think, yeah, we-
What she told you was, she's going to, she's just, she's going to go ahead and just do it, and she doesn't need your blessing to do it. Her job is traffic safety.
Yeah, get out of the way, council. I think was it-
I tried to be more polite, but, you know, hey.
It was, it was so polite, and I'm so dense, I didn't get it.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go.
The point that was just made, it was one I was trying to make earlier. Absent a proper traffic warrant, the city increases its liability by placing arbitrary traffic control devices. You have to have specific warrants in order to, to make that decision. So you really need to rely on your traffic engineer's data.
Oh, but we so like doing it ourselves.
We have seven of the best traffic engineers in the state, and we get exactly what we pay for them, too.
Yes, they're great.
So to Mike's, so if I try and summarize what I think I've heard here, Mike has suggested staff ought to go do some work, and staff has said, yeah, yeah, we're, we, we have that authority already, so we're done. Council has also suggested this committee ought to have some involvement here in, and the way it was teed up previously was, future allocations of dollars to the Mercers, let's make sure we've got lots of people talking who are coming, wearing different hats, to that conversation, and then try and figure out how best to allocate those dollars. Do we just leave well enough alone with all of that at this point, or is there something else we ought to try and do?
The only thing I would encourage the council to do is to address the issue of straddling the fog lines. I, I don't think there should be, from any public safety standpoint, I don't think there should be any, any question that you don't straddle fog lines. By definition, that if fog line is there just for that very reason, if it happens to be foggy, if it happens to be night, it would shock the hell out of someone to come around, befalling the fog lines, and suddenly find there's a car that's parked across it. I mean, that's just, that's, and it's, I, I was surprised when the chief said that, right now, it's technically legal to straddle a fog line, as long as you're far enough away from the center line. And, and I think that's something that the council should address, that, because it's, it's not just the Mercers, it's everywhere on the island. We shouldn't have people parking across fog lines.
Now everyone knows it's legal, so watch out, they're going to be parking there.
Ed, welcome to the comment, if I might. Ed Holmes, your police chief, for the record. So, first of all, I appreciate Dan's email, or communication on the topic of safety. And while we have the city ordinance that says you can't park in a fashion that leaves less than eight feet from the center of the roadway, it doesn't say anything about fog lines. But there is also a state law, revised Code of Washington state law, that says you can't park in a manner where the police officer can tow a vehicle if it's parked in a manner where it constitutes an obstruction of traffic or jeopardizes public safety. And that's RCW 4655-113. So we have the city ordinance that says you can't park in a, in a fashion that leaves less than eight feet from center, but there's also that state law that says we can tow a vehicle if it's parked in a fashion that constitutes a public safety hazard. So it doesn't specifically mention fog line, but there is that piece of it. If a police officer came upon a vehicle that was parked, if it was straddling the fog line and constituted a public safety hazard, we can tow that. So there's a couple of different references we could use.
I, I, I appreciate you, you hadn't mentioned that when we'd last talked, but, you know, I guess, at least from my standpoint, one shouldn't have to make that second inquiry. The inquiry is, are you straddling a fog line, and you shouldn't be there if you're straddling a fog line. I mean, you shouldn't have to further say, well, is it a public safety hazard? Well, it may not be a public safety hazard at 5:00 in the evening, but it may be a public safety hazard at 6:00 in the evening. So you have to come back an hour later to see if someone has still parked there an hour later. I, you know, it's, it's, at some point, we have to exercise a little bit of common sense. And, and the common sense thing is that, whether it's on the Mercers, whether it's on Forteth, whether it's on any, any other place on this island where we have fog lines, they're there for a purpose, and it's not to be straddled. It's just, it's just, it's like, you wouldn't park on top of a sidewalk. And we can all agree, no one should do that. But, and we, I think we could all sit here and say that, if we were to have asked, everyone in this council, is it legal to, to park to straddle a fog line? My guess is that every person up here would say, of course it's not legal to straddle a fog line. And to find out that it is, I don't, I don't, so why wouldn't we want to address that? And why don't, and why do we have to wait for anyone to, to tell us the obvious thing? And that should not get lost in this process of, of wherever this whole thing comes out with the committee, and the recommendations, and whether we should do no parking there, or don't do no parking, or just leave it alone. You shouldn't straddle fog lines. And then it's a purely, it's a good public safety step to take.
Jane, and then Debbie.
I have a question for the she, the chief. Since we've had our city ordinance prohibiting parking eight feet fro, close to the center line, and also the state law that you cited about obstruction or parking in such a way as to constitute a public safety hazard, we've had those for a very long time. How much of a problem do we have on Mercer Island with people parking on the fog lines and necessitating towing?
Yeah. It's not one that we run into very often. And we probably run into it most during special events. But if, at the Beach Club, for example, tonight, we had some issues at the Beach Club, so our officers went down there and sighted some vehicles. The Shore Club, any other club, or a family, say, has a large gathering at their house, those are infrequent, but that's when we see it the most. I've had a discussion recently with our officers, sort of pulled them informally, a few of them. What do you think about an ordinance, as Dan described? It's sort of a mix. It, it could be helpful, but like I say, we have the state law, but they're not, they're not saying big concerns with that kind of an ordinance. The general sense was, we have, between the city ordinance and the current state law, they have the tools if they needed to, if there's really a hazard, but at the same time, it wasn't, it would, it would give them an extra tool, as the one had described, but it isn't-
And it's not a big problem?
It, it hasn't been something we experience a lot of.
Okay. Thanks.
Debbie?
Interestingly enough, I would have known that you can park across a fog line, because about eight, nine years ago, running along West Mercer in the winter, in the dark, there were construction vehicles that were consistently on the inside lane parked, and I felt very, very vulnerable as a runner at that point. Because if, if you follow guidance, you're on the left side of the road, running against traffic, they come from the other direction. What I do think we need to be careful of is, again, there are places where people have historically been parking and crossing the fog line. I'm not saying that they should, again, speaking from those personal experiences, but I think we need to recognize that there could be a notable change, request and change of behavior in certain spots, I think in particular when it does come to construction, et cetera. Because it's, it's there on the West Mercers, it's definitely-
Because it's there on the West Mercers, it's definitely there on the northern part of the West Mercers.
Thank you, Ed. So, Tana, did you want... I mean, I think the... So, we... If I try and summarize where I think we are, we're setting aside what was proposed here. We are still doing the committee. We are expecting that staff is going to go and analyze intersections if they think that's the right thing to do. Dan has teed up the question of straddling fog lines. And I think we're left with... To address his question as to whether we want to carry forward with that. Ed has said, "Not a big deal," but it's on the table. So, am I getting that right? Or is that where we are? Are there other questions that are still wound up in this that we need to address?
You've got it.
Okay. So, with that, I think that's the question. Tana, did you want to try and take a shot at that?
Just on the fog line issue, I was also surprised that you could park across the fog line. I mean, I think people are asking to get their car hit if they're straddling the fog line. But so I would just say that, just as we're saying we'd like the committee to look at Joe Bear's report and to look at this, it would be great to have them look at the fog line issue as well. And with Debbie's concerns of, are there places to... Where people shouldn't cross... You know, have people look at that. Of course, if it means people are going to have to change their behavior, I think that's our point, is that if it's unsafe behavior, we want them to change that behavior. So, I'm not uncomfortable with people having to change their behavior if it's a dangerous behavior. But looking at that fog line issue might also address an issue that was raised when we were talking about Island Crest Way and having slightly wide shoulders along that and concern that people might think they can park there because the shoulder is wide-ish. So, looking at the fog line issue might actually help alleviate some of that, answer that question, too. So, I think it might prove to be a broader point to... If we do indeed look at the fog line issue, whether that's committee or staff, again, it might address not only the Mercer question, but some of the Mercer questions, but the future wide shoulders of Island Crest Way as well.
So, is it a thought that the committee be asked to have a look at this? Anybody else want to weigh in on... So, Dan, your committee and staff. Dan, are you okay with that? Do you want to pitch it in a different way?
Yeah. I don't know what the committee's going to do with it, but it's... It's like, to me, it's as simple as, do you stop at a red light? I mean, you shouldn't be straddling a fog line. It's just so intuitive that that shouldn't be something that's permitted anywhere in the city. And I respect what Ed is saying, that it hasn't been a big problem. But maybe it's because everyone's always assumed that you shouldn't straddle a fog line. And hopefully, and most people get it right. But then, you know, Debbie points out cases where she saw it wrong. It happened when Bruce and I biked around the island about a month ago, the one of the people who was parking there happened to be parking across the fog line on a curve to boot. So, it was like, you know, does it happen? Yes, it does happen, we know it happens. You know, did it cause an accident at that particular moment? No. But it's... I just think that it's... What has come out of this process is identify a gap in our ordinances that it should be something that we as a council should say that's... Unless staff disagrees, and staff believes people should be allowed to park across fog lines, I mean, no one asked Ed that question, but maybe let me ask you, Ed. Do you think people should park across fog lines? Is that a no? Thank you. Okay. And I mean, is there anyone... Ann, do you think people should be allowed to park across fog lines?
That's... Where are we going with this? I'm just... You know, you're asking... Wait a minute. Mr. Mayor, you have three things that the council needs to give you guidance on. It's not what Councilmember Grous wants. You now have distilled three issues for the council to give direction to vote on. Let's just get on with it.
Yeah. So, Mike, I love the fact that this is a little dose of your own medicine in this. And so, the floor is back to Dan on this. And in future, brevity is a great thing, but they've got to work in all directions. So, Dan, you still got it.
I just... All I'm saying is that this is something that, you know, if the consensus of the council is to kick it over to committee, that's fine. Kick it over to staff, that's fine. But it shouldn't just be allowed to get buried in this whole thing because we're going to take six months or a year or whatever to try to come up with a final solution to this.
Okay. So, we have, give it to staff, or we have, give it to the committee, I think. Is that fair, those two options?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think we have...
Sorry, a third option? You said three, you keep it up?
I thought there's three things that the council kind of needs to give. One is, my proposition is to... Is for the staff to prioritize, if you will, or to focus on those five intersections. The other is the committee. And the third is whether we want to study this fog line issue. That's the way I broke up the discussion.
And I was giving you a gimme on the staff looking at five intersections.
Well, I think it's one that, you know, the staff, they do have... They have authority to do a lot of stuff. They have authority to do a lot of stuff. But I think it's important to show the citizens out there and also staff that, given constraints on time and money, et cetera, we want them to emphasize this. We want them to fit it in. Or where it fits in, something else might drop off, where there isn't as much attention or as a safety issue.
So, let's just try and get through that one. Ann, you going to take a look at this or not?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Are we... Are we done on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we are.
Thank you. Okay. Mike, you're good with that? Okay. Committee and... How did you... You broke it up into committee versus fog line somehow.
The committee on what we've been talking about, actually with Jim Stanton's... I think Jim Stanton's got a great...
I think the committee's a go, and we haven't said anything that wasn't a go on the committee. So, I think we're good on committee at this point, with the fog line question still remaining in much disagree.
I don't care to muddle things up with the fog line.
Yeah. Okay. So, what I need is just a direction on whether fog lines are going to committee or...
Let's do it.
Staying with counsel? Are you looking for a counsel, direct staff to do an ordinance on fog lines? Is that where you want to go?
If I have my druthers, that's what I'd like staff to do, but we have to... That has to go out for a public hearing, and it has to... You know, we have to... There has to be... It can't be something that comes to the next council meeting, and we just pass it, obviously, because there's been no warning to the public. And there may be some things that I haven't thought about, that the rest of the council hasn't thought about, staff hasn't thought about. It's perfectly appropriate to... But I think it's something that I'd like to put it on a... I'd like staff to do an analysis, come back to us, tell us whether it serves a public safety purpose. And then, in some future agenda in the fall, which would be the next time we could consider it, put it up for public comment. And it's not just for the Mercers, it'd be just an island-wide ordinance prohibiting people from straddling fog lines.
Okay. So, that's a position... There's a position to say, have the committee look at it when the...
Proposed?
Yeah. So, those are the two ideas that are on the table. All right. Debbie, do you have a third, or you want to speak to one of those?
I think I'm speaking to one of them, if I understand correctly. And what I would like to do is to get a little bit more information about what it means to be straddling the fog line. Because I assume there's sort of an average width of a car, which is four feet?
Six.
Six? Okay. I'm driving my little fit these days. So, if it's six feet, does that automatically mean that the majority of the island with a fog line becomes unparkable? That's what I would like to understand.
We can't answer that right now.
Yeah. And I'm saying, it can't be understood. But I think before we go any further, let's start to size the magnitude of what we're talking about here. Because it does, you know, I think all of us say, it makes sense. I mean, the fact that I picked up the phone after going for a run nine years ago and called the police department and said, "What do you mean, these guys can park across the fog line?" I mean, it's counterintuitive. But the point is, it is happening on occasion. It does happen in places, I think particularly around construction areas. And before I send it off into a committee who may or may not have the degree of legal background and/or ability to meet frequently, I would like to get a sizing from staff, which says, "Here's the parts of the island that either do or do not meet the six-foot requirement." And then, this was... This map, again, for those of you at home, is a novel of, you know, just the curves on the Mercer Ways. And, you know, on one hand, you laugh, but on the other hand, you realize just, you know, what a diverse topography we really have in its entirety. So, my point is, I'd like to hear from staff.
Can I make a suggestion?
Oh, fire away. I'm desperate here for some sort of clean provision to this.
Well, I'm not sure it's clean. You're probably not going to make everybody happy. But if you step back for a minute and you think of what we've talked about this year in transportation, in traffic, in pedestrian facilities, and shoulders, and parking signs, we have a transportation planning staff of one. And we're also doing a major project on Island Crest and residential street overlays, and she has a staff of one that's doing that. A lot of this is not work that was on your work plan, some of it was, not all of it. What I think maybe you ought to consider, if you want us to work on fog lines, let's put it on the 2013 work plan, and you can prioritize it against a bunch of other things that you'll probably want. But I worry that Ann keeps saying, "Yes," and I don't know, do you even have time to do a study on whether or not straddling fog lines is a good idea or a not-good idea, and where that could happen and not happen, and get all of your capital projects done?
Oh, and do a committee, too.
And do a committee. We've got a committee tonight.
Solve that one. It could be tight.
I guess maybe the point I'm trying to make is, the council, you need to keep in mind you have a limited resource, and use it wisely, use it on the things that are the highest priority.
I like Rich's idea.
I'd just like to point out, too, that we've already established the fact that as the buttons along the Mercers deteriorate, they're going to be replaced with fog lines. We're going to get a lot more fog lines than we have now. So, I think we need to be very clear about what we're going to... What we'll do about fog lines. And I think it's fine to postpone that till the 2013 work plan.
Debbie's nodding, yes?
Do you have a reminder that we have one very mighty incapable person that staff is simply the greatest?
Thank you.
Tana, Dan? All right. Dan?
And this was, as Debbie said, this was pretty amazing. So, thank you for all your stuff.
Are we voting on something?
I think we... It's already passed.
What is it?
It's Rich's idea, pundit to the planning session in January.
Prioritize it against whatever else is on the table.
All right, with a grim shake of his head.
No, I appreciate what the city manager did. My... We have to be respectful that there's a price to every good idea we want to study. And that's... The city manager highlighted that well. And sometimes we're our own worst enemy. And sometimes in... With lack of information, you know, you kind of have to say, "Is it really necessary to add another study, another committee, et cetera?" Are we going to get the bang out of the buck for either outright hard costs and soft costs? And I think this is one of those situations where we're saying, "Let's do it."
It was just minutes ago when he was saying, "Let's get on with it, the decision's been made."
Lovely hearing Mike say, "Maybe sometimes not collecting more data is a good idea."
All right.
Ann, you've got everything from us you're going to get, I think. So, all right. Thank you for all your hard work on this. We sent you on a bit of a goose chase. To some extent, I think you've done a lot to help us sort of work our way through it. Joe, thank you. You're going to be involved more, you're not going to be able to get away from this one. So, you know, we may have a staff of one, but you're getting dragged into it. Yeah. So, thank you all. Okay. We are done with regular business. We move on to other business. Councilmember absences. Can I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Grady?
I'll make that motion to excuse Councilmember Grady.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Very good. Any upcoming council member absences we are not already aware of?
Can I potentially retract an absence?
Absolutely.
I will probably be here on August 6th.
August 6th, Debbie will be here. All right.
Probably a good idea.
Yeah. That'll be an interesting one. Okay. With that, we are on to planning schedule. Rich?
Well, as you guys were discussing fog lines, I was looking at the planning schedule. There are some adjustments that we will need to do in September and October.
Wait, you were actually looking at the planning schedule while we were doing that, and you pulled us out of it. Nice work.
I won't say a word.
All right.
The Planning Commission is ready to send to you their recommendations on the no-net loss and 4060. That's scheduled for September 4th.
A correction, they're not ready.
They're not? Oh, I thought they actually did... They're going to have another meeting?
They're ready on the no-net loss, they're not ready on the other portion. They did decide, because I informed them that they were not on the agenda until September, that they would meet at least tomorrow.
So, that's a tentative for September 4th, and then a second reading in October. And it's making those meetings, particularly October 1st, untenable. So, I'm going to have to make some adjustments here as we find out where we can place the Planning Commission's work. So, all I'm saying is, the fall's going to look a little different. You're way into budget, you can see almost every one of these budget meetings could be consumed, up to a couple hours' worth. So, there's not a lot of topical issues that we can do. We'll do some, but not many.
No, we did... We've already missed one meeting in July, we're missing another meeting in August. If we need to schedule an additional meeting, you shouldn't... I think you shouldn't be adverse to doing that.
Right. Well, we've done that for October 22nd for the budget.
Yeah, we always do that for the budget.
And we could add some non-budget, you know, one or two items to that if we needed to.
No, but I just say, instead of us wringing our hands and saying we don't have time to do something...
Right, I got it.
We got an extra vacation already, and theoretically, that second August meeting is only supposed to be canceled if we don't have anything to do. So, it's not...
Okay. Well, I get it. Yeah. Good point.
Well, I'm not going to want it... What is it, August what?
Oh, I don't think he's...
I have things to do in August because people have already made plans. I'm just saying that we can... We may have to make up some time afterwards.
In September, October.
I've missed enough.
Yeah. All right. Got it.
We know you're always on vacation, Mike. So, we try to work our way in between them. Thank you, I do appreciate it.
I think there are also probably a couple of places that I just want to point out that we can... We have TBD study sessions or no-study sessions, and we might want to use those more. So, I know one study session we talked about, we did want to have was the sustainability study session to talk more about the task force recommendation, and even moving something like Communities That Care update out of the regular agenda and into the study session.
Yeah, it gives us another hour to work with within the framework.
Yeah, especially when there's no major action taken.
Yep. That's a good point.
And then I have one question on the August 6th meeting, the dashboard report. Does that include the survey results?
It can. We have some of the top-line results, and I think by August 6th, we may well have the full presentation. So, that would be a...
So, that would be another...
Good timing.
Potential.
If we don't do it then, then we get it in September as for pre-budget stuff. But, yes, I'll see if we can do that, it'd be a good combination.
Okay, other planned comments on the planning schedule? No? All right, then, board appointments? We have none. We've been busy with the last couple of meetings, but we're through at this point with that. Councilmember reports. Debbie, on, sir?
Yes, Planning Commission met last Wednesday, and they were discussing the two ordinances as directed by council, the first one being the 60/40, and the second one being no net loss. A lot of work has gone on, there's been a work session previous to the meeting on Wednesday. Net-net, the Planning Commission has decided to recommend the elimination of the no net loss to council. They are still working through the amendment, or potential amendment to the 60/40. At this point, the direction that they're going is to amend the definition of professional services that would fall into the 60% category. One of the concerns that has been raised by several members of the commission is that by doing so, by moving certain allowed purposes that have been in the 40 into the 60, you could find yourself with facilities that are exclusively, for example, financial services, or exclusively non-retail services in the traditional sense they have been, have been defined historically. So, they'll be continuing to work through that and come back. And again, just to reiterate, what they, the decision that they made is to not include any reference to parking in that ordinance as well. So, it's been a very lively and intense set of discussions.
All right. Anything else? Okay, Tana?
I just wanted to make special mention and thanks to the Parks and Rec Department, because Summer Celebration was phenomenal, I thought, and I really enjoyed it, it was great, and the weather was cooperative, too, which I want to thank the weather. So, I know there was a lot of work that went into that, so that was really great.
Does anybody know who Darth Vader really is? He's elected.
Yeah, if we were to say one thing, we weren't, we were sandwiched in between Darth Vader, the city council was sandwiched in between Darth Vader and a bubble machine, so we weren't exactly sure what that meant.
Good placement for your council.
Darth Vader behind us. The force was with you.
Exactly.
Yeah?
And then I also wanted to mention again the great article by Chief Holmes and executive, the YFS executive director Cindy Goodwin, on the gun violence and mental health services. And our community does have great services, and so that was really a wonderful article, so thanks.
Dan?
Yeah, I also, in addition to what everything, what Tana said on Summer Celebration, just acknowledge the fireworks display, which was really phenomenal, which I got to see on top of my mountain.
Oh, did you really?
Yes, yes, there's a lot of people there, I was charging for admission, but.
A party on your mountain?
A party on my mountain, but it was absolutely phenomenal, and great, great job done.
Great.
How come we don't know?
How come we're not invited to your mountain?
Jane?
Well, I also want to say, Summer Celebration was wonderful, it was a great theme, well carried out, and the weather was perfect. I attended the Open Space Conservancy meeting, June 21st, and eventually, they will get their chance to bring their annual report for 2011 and their work plan for 2012. It was postponed, it was supposed to happen tonight, but I'm sure they're well, probably more than halfway through the work plan for 2012. And there was a very nice tribute to Don Cohen, who was on the Open Space Conservancy Trust for the past eight years, did a great job, he's retiring from that now. Public Safety Committee, maybe you want to talk about that? July 11th, the Arts Council meeting, they are busy at work gearing up for all the Arts Council, mostly Music in the Park and the Shakespeare in the Park, so it's a, as well as the Art Gallery, new show that's going in, so they're very busy this summer. Also working on a three-year plan for art. All the, the community and the, especially the city council, and the mayor, and the city manager, everybody's invited to a reception August 16th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Community Center, for the installation, or to honor the installation of new space art pieces. During Summer Celebration, the Arts Council booth had ballots asking for input from the community on what to name these pieces, so the Arts Council Special Committee will be figuring out the name this week, I guess, so it's a wonderful new addition to the Community Center. Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting, July 13th. We heard the Metro Strategic Plan Update linking transit planning and land use. We also heard a report on Metro's alternative services planning, so that will affect Mercer Island only tangentially as Metro decides what to do with certain routes, and the criteria they will use to decide what routes will be retained and which will be cut or changed. Anne, that's it.
Thank you. Mike?
It's great to be back.
I went to Italy. Tell us what you know about Italy.
Went to Italy, had a wonderful time, went to a cooking class, and learned how to make pasta, and tomato sauce, and lots of eats and lots of drinks.
Sounds great.
Can I make one quick comment, and that is, about the recycle center?
Okay.
Many thanks to the staff, who, it's hard to believe that you could spruce up the recycle center, but they did in advance, and I think that's going to be a fun conversation for council and a variety of community groups to have going forward, not in terms necessarily of a long-term solution, we know that we need to look at that, but also, we have some great blank canvas at the recycling center that could turn into some fun art projects.
We do need to bring that back to you guys, and continue the conversation of what to do next. We kind of got partway and stopped, and then.
The recession hit, and.
That's right.
Yeah. Let's see, as for myself, I echo, because Summer Celebration was great, it wasn't until the end of Sunday that I made my way, all the way down and found Bruce Fletcher in a toga, giving out gold medals for things, and I was, I was, I was forced into Olympic Games against a couple young girls from Texas who absolutely couldn't believe that they were actually competing against the mayor, so, one of them beat me, though, so I was, I was a little bitter about that, but other than that, it was good. I, overall, great thing, joined the sister city's boat on its tour around the island and for the fireworks.
And the Chamber, and the Chamber, co-sponsors.
And it was, yeah, thank you, and it was, that was a great outing, so certainly recommend everyone consider that for next year. It was a wonderful way to end the weekend. Had participated in a meeting with mayors from around the area, from around the lake, at which Fred Jarrett talked a bit about the need for us to perhaps get involved more in the conversation around county solid waste disposal, tipping fees, so suggest that we.
We are.
Poke noses into that a little bit, and figure out, make sure that everything's okay. Yes, yes, and just poke your nose in solid waste. And then also attended a meeting put together by Skip Priest and Mike McGinn, the group that they've put together to talk about transportation, and the state legislative process, and how we fix our transportation problems. Judy Cliburn was the featured guest at that, talked to us about what she sees happening at the county, at the state level, and that'll be an ongoing conversation that, you know, probably makes sense for us to have at some point, to just make sure we're weighing in on how we think local options ought to be presented in the next legislative session. The thing that happened in this last session was that it was teed up, and then the county and the cities started squabbling with each other, and that caused our legislative.
King County and King County cities got into a squabble, which frustrated and ultimately stopped a statewide transportation package.
That's right.
We can really be a mess in this little county, so.
So, at this point, the need, the thought is that we need to figure out our story with the county earlier rather than later, so that when it gets to legislative session time, the, we're all speaking with one voice. And that's it? Anything else we need to cover? I've lost my agenda here.
No, that's it?
No, you're, so, okay, so with that, we conclude other business, and we will now move to an executive session. And another break briefly before we do that, perhaps? No? You guys okay, ready to go? All right, so, and, you want to shoot for 30 minutes?
We're going to have two separate executive sessions.
We do, so you want to say more than 30 before? Yeah.
30 for one.
Start with 30, we'll come out, we'll add to it.
All right, so, yeah, expect a long session, but it has two purposes. The first is to discuss a collective bargaining agreement pursuant to RCW 42.30.140 per N4, and the second is to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by purchase or lease when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 per N1, per N B. And we're off. Is that right? Two separate topics. It's a separate topic.
Executive session at the 30 minute mark has concluded the discussion of a collective bargaining agreement. And we are moving now to a second portion of the executive session to consider selection of a site or acquisition of real estate. And we will allow 30 minutes for that discussion as well. So by clock here, come back at 10:50 or whatever, 11:23? Okay? Thank you.